Hello.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting for the moment. Okay, now call to order the Planning Commission meeting of August 13th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our statement of values.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interests of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Please be seated. Okay, Elizabeth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Batnagar has notified us that he's unable to attend. Commissioner Biagini?
Present.
Commissioner Chair Kuru?
Here.
Commissioner Wang?
Here.
Commissioner Buza?
Here.
Commissioner Salim?
Here.
Commissioner Kretschlow?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Batnagar, did he have an excuse?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Batnagar?
Second.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
We have to iterate and speak it.
Okay, so Commissioner Buza, you don't have a screen? Okay, your vote is yes. Commissioner Salim, do you have a screen to vote?
I have no screen, but I can say yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Chair Kuru, did you cast your vote?
No screen, yes.
Okay, very good. The motion passed, thank you.
All right, motion passes. Declaration of commission proceedings.
Thank you, Chair. The Chair of the Commission directs all activity during the meetings. All comments shall be addressed to the Commission through the Chair. Any item on this agenda may be continued to a subsequent hearing. Applicants will be allotted up to 10 minutes to present and justify proposals following staff presentation of the item. Other speakers will be given up to two minutes. The applicant is allotted up to five minutes for a battle of comments. No additional comments will be accepted upon the close of public hearing, although the Commission reserves the right to direct questions to any speaker on any matter. Special procedures, time limits, may be applied to any items as prescribed by the Chair. Appeal of Commission actions must be filed in writing within seven calendar days after the meeting.
Thank you very much. Copies of the current agenda and staff reports for each of the items on the agenda are available from the Planning Division office on the Friday afternoon preceding the meeting and available online. For continuance and exceptions, this part of the meeting allows for the applicants, members of the public or other interested parties to request that an item be one, continued without hearing, two, withdrawn, or three, taken out of order. Are there any requests from applicants, the public, or the Commission for a continuance or exception for any of the items on tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
No? Okay. Do we have a mo— okay, so we don't need to have a motion or second position?
No.
There? No announcement. Okay. The Planning Commission has seven members. Whenever the full Commission is not present, applicants have the option to continue their item to another meeting. Consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar today. Secretary Chair Kuru, would you please read the procedure for the consent calendar?
The procedure for the consent calendar is as follows. Consent calendar items may be enacted, approved, or adopted by one motion unless request to be removed by anyone for discussion or explanation. If any member of the Planning Commission, staff, the applicant, or a member of the public wishes to comment on a consent calendar item or would like the item to be heard on the regular agenda, please make your request now. Items listed on the consent calendar with associated file numbers that constitute today's public hearing is 1A, Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 21st, 2025; 1B, Planning Commission meeting minutes of June 11th, 2025; 1C, action to adopt a resolution to deny the modification to an existing conditional use permit, PLN 24-00392, that would have changed existing conditions of approval, conditions P6, P8, P19, P20, concerning solid waste and recycling collection at the existing Subaru dealership located at 3225 Stevens Creek Boulevard.
Thank you, Secretary. The Chair will ask if anyone would like to address the Commission on items not on the agenda, so would anybody like to say anything?
Pardon me, Mr. Chair, that's a little premature. First, you need to take a motion on the consent calendar.
So, motion for the consent calendar, anybody want to make a motion?
Consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes, we need to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I have a question. On the consent calendar, probably three items. For the third one, I against it, but for the first one, second one, I agree.
You're abstaining for the third?
Yeah.
Got it, thanks.
No, no, actually, the third one, I don't agree with the deny.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't— can we take the items one at a time so we can differentiate this?
The ordinary procedure is if a member does not agree with any item on the consent calendar, you pull that item. So I'd recommend you take action on the first two and then treat that third item separately.
Okay, so let's— Commissioner Biagini, would you like to modify your motion to accept the first two items, 1A, 1B?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve items 1A and 1B on the consent calendar. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Apria, are you able to cast your vote? Okay, so I'll put you down.
Hi.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, the motion passed, thank you.
Okay, so with 1C, what is our process? That'd be pulled?
So, you can either just call for a motion on that item, or if there— any commissioner wants any discussion on it, you can do that as well.
Commissioner Wang, would you like to discuss it?
Yeah, actually, yeah, I think we had the meeting last time, discussed Subaru waste pickup location. I— yeah, I think it's a— deny the application is not right, since they just add one stop at the back of the Subaru dealership, so that's why I—I—I against the staff's recommendation to deny their request.
So just to clarify, this was discussed and heard, and it was a four-two vote, so it was already voted upon and it passed, which is why we have the resolution only come forward, and that's why in consent calendar. So it was already discussed, motion was passed.
Yeah, it's okay.
Motion was to deny with the majority four-two.
Yeah, it's okay, I just don't agree with it.
Just saying that.
Okay, exactly. Clarification.
Yes. On whether to approve the reso.
Motion to approve item 1C on the minutes.
So just to be clear, when you're voting on this, you're saying action to adopt a resolution to deny the modification to the existing conditions, right?
That's correct.
Everybody understands that's what the motion is.
By voting yes, you're voting no on the application.
You're approving the resolution to deny it, yeah. So the motion was made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Commissioner Buza to—
Commissioner Buza?
—to approve item 1C. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Hold on, one minute, please. I want to make sure people were understanding this.
Okay.
Commissioner Biagini, are you—
So, to vote yes is to deny the modification?
That's right.
And to vote no is to approve the modification? But we—the resolution that we requested was to deny the modification? Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. So, okay, so, everything good? Let's go ahead and have the vote.
Still don't see a screen.
Okay, so Commissioner Chair Kuru, what is your vote, then?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passed, thank you. Okay.
I knew you guys were gonna make it difficult on my first night.
Of course.
No.
Hazing began.
It's a test.
Hazing the tests, yeah, I'm getting it, yeah, so far. Okay, so we already went over if anybody wanted to address items not on the agenda. There was no one, as far as I know, right?
Well, I—I cut you off before.
Okay, well, I'll do it again. The Chair will— okay, does anybody want to address the Commission on items not on the agenda? Okay, let's go on. No one online? Okay, so let's move to public hearing items. And what we have tonight is a public hearing, item number two. Starting with item number two, there's no item number one, I see. All right. One's the consent calendar. Again, you're giving me a hard time here, okay, thank you. Public hearing action on a vesting tentative subdivision map, PLN 25-00225 for 11 townhouses located at 1530 and 1540 Pomeroy. Item three, public hearing action on the initial study and mitigation— mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you actually don't need to—
Read all that?
—continue, you can just stop and take number two.
We'll go item by item.
Okay. So go ahead, proceed with the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, good evening, Commission. Nimesh Agarwal, Senior Planner and Project Manager for this project. Sorry, just sharing my screen, just a minute. Okay. So the request before you— before the Commission today is to provide a recommendation to the City Council on the vesting tentative subdivision map for 11 townhouses located at 1530 and 1540 Pomeroy, subject to conditions of approval. Here's a look at the site. On the right is the— On the right is a picture highlighting the site, which is located south of El Camino Real and west of Pomeroy Avenue. It is—the site consists of two parcels for a total of 0.48 acres. The site to the south is 1530 Pomeroy, and it has a general plan designation of medium-density residential, and the corresponding zoning is R3. And the parcel on the north side is 1540 Pomeroy Avenue, and it has a general plan designation of mixed-use community commercial, and the corresponding zoning is MUCC. Both the parcels are currently occupied by one-story vacant single-family residences. The adjacent uses include commercial users to the north, single-family homes to the east and to the—to the west and to the south. And on the— on the east is the Pomeroy Avenue and multifamily dwellings. Here is a street view. These are the two existing houses. Looking at the general plan and zoning in a bigger context, so highlighted is the site, and looking at the general plan designations for the surrounding properties here, as well as zoning. To provide a bit of a background, there was a previous proposal on this site, which was approved to construct eight units on this site. That was approved at the Development Review Hearing on August 18, 2021, and the associated condo map was approved by Council on May 10, 2022. However, the planning entitlements expired, and therefore—and the condo map expired also, and therefore, it has come back again in the interim. In August 2024, the city did a comprehensive zoning update, and the two sites were rezoned. So the site at 15—the parcel at 1530 Pomeroy was rezoned from low-density multiple dwelling to R3, a medium-density residential, and the parcel at 1540 Pomeroy was rezoned from agriculture to mixed-use community commercial. What that did was, that required the applicant to revise the proposal, the previous proposal, and the current proposal is to construct 11 townhouses consistent with the density requirements for the R4— R3 zone, and the— density requirements for both the zoning districts. And the proposal was to construct—is to construct 1530 Pomeroy, three-story buildings with five attached townhomes, and on 1540 Pomeroy, three-story buildings with six attached townhomes. This proposal was approved at the Development Review Hearing on May 14th, 2025. In the picture here to the right, we can see the—the—the rendering for the 1540 Pomeroy development, the townhomes. So now before the Planning Commission is the request for the vesting tentative subdivision map to merge the parcels and create condominium subdivision for sale and ownership purposes. Here is a look at the tentative map. It shows the parcel on the north, which has the six units and the six lots, and on the south is 1530 Pomeroy with the five lots and some common area in the back. Looking at the projects or the tentative maps conformance, the subdivision map act requires that all subdivision maps be consistent with the general plan, and the city's subdivision clearance committee reviewed the vesting tentative map and determined it to be complete on June 3rd, 2025. This— this determination meant that it is consistent, the proposal is consistent with the general plan, zoning, the building code, and other applicable regulations. The architectural review, as I mentioned before, for the 11-unit development was approved at the DRH on May 14, 2025. The architectural review approval determined that the project was consistent with the general plan and zoning regulations, as the proposed use and the scale of the development are consistent with the allowable land use— land uses and density. The proposed vesting tentative map is consistent with the approved project, including the site plan improvements, private streets, surface parking, landscape, open space areas, and associated utilities on the project site. The applicant did do a public outreach on March 13, 2024, conducted a hybrid community meeting, which was attended by six members of the public in person and four members attended online virtually. The topics discussed were architecture, density, parking, applicable zoning regulations, and the impacts to the adjacent single-family residences. To address the public comments, the applicant did make modifications to the elevations, renderings, emphasizing vertical distinction between the units, aligning the windows, simplifying the roof form, and that was the—the end result that was approved at the Development Review Hearing. For SEQA, on August 18, 2021, the city adopted the 1530-1540 Pomeroy Avenue Residential Project ISMND at the Development Review Hearing for the eight-unit development. An addendum to the ISMND was prepared pursuant to the SEQA Guidelines, Section 15164, and adopted on May 14, DRH. The addendum concluded that there would be no new or substantially more severe significant impacts not already addressed in the 2021 ISMND, nor was there any new information of substantial importance that would have triggered additional environmental review. The proposed vesting tentative subdivision map is consistent with the approved project analyzed in the addendum and would not result in a new impact on the environment or significantly increase the severity of any previously identified impact. With that, the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council that they find the proposed subdivision falls within the scope of the adopted SEQA addendum prepared for the project, and no further analysis is required. An adopted resolution recommending to the City Council— recommending that the City Council approve the vesting tentative subdivision map to merge the two parcels and create a one-lot subdivision for condominium purposes for the 11 townhouses and common area at 1530-1540 Pomeroy Avenue, subject to findings and conditions of approval. That concludes the staff presentation. The applicant is here to answer any questions that you may have, and we are here, too.
Through the Chair. What is the setback from the southern residential property? I see 10 feet to this—to the property line, but do we know if it's the regular three feet that is the closest wall, and is it a residence? It shows existing building ridge, so I don't know what that is on— on the site plan.
Let me share the screen. So are you referring to the rear setback?
Yeah, to the south.
To the south, over here?
Yeah.
So these are the parking spaces, the building line is over here?
I'm asking from the property of the— the condominiums. There's 10-foot setback to the edge of wall to property line, not the parking structure. And then there is an existing building, so I don't know if it's in your packet. It's the site plan, the fire department access road that is shown with that site plan. It's page 82 of the report here. And it shows existing building, one, to confirm if that's a residence, and if so, is that just a three-foot setback or five-feet setback, such that we can reasonably expect at least a 15-foot setback, but I'm not sure, that's what I want to know.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, just to understand the question correctly, are you referring to the setback on the—you're referring to the existing site plan, maybe?
are you referring to the setback on the, you're referring to the existing site plan, maybe?
No.
Okay, so...
I'm asking from the edge of wall.
Correct.
The property line, it's showing 10 feet.
Yes, that is correct.
I'm asking to the neighbor property, that is a residence or...
I see, on the others.
Yes.
I see.
Such that we know what the actual separation is to the closest.
Oh, I see. I would have to check on that. I don't recall that setback. I do know that this is 10 feet, and that's what you noted. So let me open up the plans.
And for the original 2022 plan, I'm assuming it was 4-4. But were they also three stories or were they two stories? Do we know how they gained the square footage and how it became three stories?
They were, as far as I recall, I think they were also three stories, but they were also two single-family homes in the previous proposal on the...
I remember this vaguely.
The 1530 Pomeroy had only two single-family homes, but the 1540 Pomeroy had six townhomes. That's not changed.
And they were three stories and two stories?
Yes.
From the single-family residence side?
They were, yeah, they were three-story townhomes, and I think it was two single-family homes. As far as I can remember, they were one stories.
One story.
I have to look back, I have to confirm.
Okay.
Look back and confirm.
Please do bring prior reference, because we are also validating that in 2022, there was a similar proposal. We are just revisiting it with three additional four properties. But I just want to make sure the public understands the changes. Those are my questions through the chair. Thanks.
I just wanted to make sure I understand something, and also for the benefit of those listening in. Would this project then help Santa Clara meet the state mandate for additional housing in our city? And if so, would it be credited to this year? Or is it kind of like when it's completed? I think the important part is the state mandate that we're facing.
Chair, if I may, I can answer that question. So for purposes of our annual report that we send to the state on housing, this would count a couple of times. So it'll count for the next cycle of our reporting, so next year's reporting. It'll account as an approved permit. And then once it's constructed, there's two metrics that are used. There's constructed units and permitted units. Then it'll count again that next, whatever year it's constructed in, it'll count under that.
Good, I like that. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, our arena is 11,632, and we're building 11 units. So it's one one-thousandth of what we need, but every little bit helps.
I didn't want to ask that, but thank you.
Any other comments?
Got a question.
Go ahead.
Staff, does the, I understand, do they have tandem parking? With the parking, at the garages, do they have tandem parking? So they accommodate two cars each, or...
So the townhomes on the north, they have two-car garages. And the, the, the townhomes on the southern parcel, they have one-car garage each, but they also provide five surface parking, unbundled parking. From the standpoint of the code requirements, they are exceeding the requirement because our code requires 1.5 parking for each of the three-bedroom units.
I understand that in that case, but the reason that I'm asking that, five parking spaces are probably going to be filled most of the time. And I guess parking, if anybody's familiar with that area right there, there's not going to be any room to park in the streets at all. So this is one of the things that I'm, you know, that I'm worried about. What it suggested is when they came up with drawings to make tandem parking, like one-car garage, but extend it, make it like a straight, straight so you can put two cars in tandem. That way will ease it. But that's a little bit too late for that now. But that's my major concern for that area there.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
I have a few questions for staff. Since we haven't done townhomes too often that I've been here, I'm curious, does the city do a review of the CCNRs?
Yes.
And does that take into account maintenance obligations, amend limitations, things like that?
So yes, the CCNRs are submitted to the city, and our city attorney's office help us review the CCNRs for a comprehensive review.
Awesome.
We have a checklist that the developers required to fill out. It's about 25 pages long. They have to identify everywhere in the CCNRs if they meet all of our requirements. Maintenance is a very important part of that review, ensuring that all the common areas will be properly maintained. If they want to amend their CCNRs years down the road, they have to seek city approval before they can do that.
And then if they do additional construction later on, it's the normal process, they still have to go through and make sure that they are adhering to the existing application and such?
They, yeah, if they modify the architecture, they need additional architectural review from the city, and individual units may need review as well.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you. Anybody else?
One last question. Thank you so much. There was a mention of Santa Clara Weekly for this property. Was that this notification, is that normal? Newspaper?
Yeah.
The, the type of notification we do for a public hearing depends on the type of approval. Subdivision maps require newspaper publication in a newspaper of general circulation, which for our city is Santa Clara Weekly.
That's accessible virtually, like online as well?
Santa Clara Weekly is online as well.
Okay, okay. And last question for the... Does this have any affordable housing?
No, it does not have any affordable housing in it. They will be paying the in-lu fees. Yes. And to answer, Commissioner Chiracuru, to answer your previous questions, the setback on the adjacent property to the south is not noted because it's, it's on the adjacent side. Looking at the site plan, ballparking it, it could be three to four feet. It's less than six feet, so kind of. But it's existing and it's not labeled. It is a residence.
Okay, so to, to validate from the public hearing process, were there any complaints from the neighbor?
No, we did not hear from the neighbor on this proposal. And to answer your second question, it was a three-story townhomes previously and two-story single-family homes.
That's what I was trying to get.
Yes.
So on the residential side, we are all recognizing the one home will now have three stories adjacent, 13 feet away at least. Okay, thank you so much.
Any further questions from, sir first staff? Okay, let me try it.
All right, let's start again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Omid, O-M-I-D, last name is Shaqiri, S-H-A-K-E-R-I. I'm the applicant representing the developers on this project. I think, first of all, I want to thank Nimitzha and other staffs at the city. They really helped us to come through this process again. Unfortunately, last year, we were ready to record our map when we were informed. Actually, Nuyen was trying to schedule a public hearing for our final map to be recorded when Nimitzha let us know that our planning permit had expired. So we had to come through the process again. And again, as Nimitzha mentioned, since last year, the properties were rezoned, especially 1530. So the density, there was a density increase. And that's why you see more units on that project. Otherwise, we're just pretty much at the minimum density. We couldn't do any, any less, less than that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be happy to come back with the same project before. We are excited. I think we, as soon as we get the map recorded, we can start construction. And hopefully this time, we'll, we'll be careful about the date of expiration, so we won't, we won't miss that date. I'm here to answer any questions you all have.
Any questions for the applicants?
No, but I do want to recognize, thank you so much again for trying to increase density as well as working through the public and its interests. But I also want to clarify that there is a transit stop, literally a stone's throw away, right? In front of the flower shop there, Sees Florist. This is on...
You're, you're talking about the, the bus stop?
Yes.
Oh, yes, there is a, I can't, I think 20, it is. There are a couple of buses that are 15-minute, in 15-minute interval going back and forth.
So in terms of meeting a 0.5-mile radius, do they get additional credit for giving us the right amount of parking at least? What would have been the limitation if so, if they had chosen because they were within a 0.5-mile radius of a transit stop?
Yes, they are within the 0.5... They are within the 0.5-mile of the Al Camino Real, and transit, of which precludes them from providing any parking.
That's what I was trying to say. So thank you. No, though, I live in this neighborhood. It is, I wanted to make sure I'm 500 feet away, at least to make this discussion. But please be mindful, you know that neighborhood and how the cars are fully packed and lined up. Please ensure in your CCNRs that there is no parking that spills to the street for a long time.
We will have a provision in the, in the CCNRs that ensures that the parking spaces within the garages are kept clear for the parking, for the cars to be parked. I think one of the problems usually that we, everybody comes along, we have so much stuff that we pack it up in the garage, and then we can't park there.
Please make...
We will put this, we will put that in the CCNRs to make sure that that's...
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I'll, Elizabeth will open up to public.
We do have public speaker, Manuel Viera, if you'd like to come up.
Hello, how are you guys doing today? Unfortunately, I got stuck in traffic from Monterey over here because of car week. I own the, if I'm correct, I own the property adjacent right behind where they're going to be building, on 1360 Calabasas, which is a 14-unit apartment complex. Regarding parking, we have a lot, mostly one bedrooms over there. And we have accommodating for basically one-car parking plus an additional half-car for every unit. So, and we have people parking throughout the whole Calabasas everywhere. It's very high-congested. With this type of project right here, I do have a couple of concerns. Basically, the way the building is being put to invade the privacy of this building, it's been over 20 years. We are the original builders, second generation, Santa Clarin. And the concern about our residents that are in that complex, and of course, the privacy. In addition, there's an elevation situation between my property and the property they're talking about. And I don't, like I said, I haven't seen anything about proposing of a retaining wall to maintain the soil so it doesn't go on their property when they're going to do their elevations and everything like that. We are higher than they are. So we're pre-existing. Hopefully, that will be in consideration. Like I said, I haven't been able to look at the maps on it because there's been so many other issues going on. In addition, we had developers trying to buy our property. And I feel that the, you guys want high density, but you got to remember, there's a lot of people who've been there forever. Our ex-mayor is right behind me, too, Eddie Suze's wife. And, and next door, you guys let it put an ADU right next to my apartment, next to the next house over, which is fine. It keeps the integrity of the neighborhood. Like I said, hope you guys keep that in consideration. It is very high-congested. It's only a single-lane road with parking on both sides. And with this much people coming in, it'll be bad. Thank you very much.
Got a question for you. I got a question for you.
I saw the red lights, so I ran.
What is your last name, if you don't mind saying?
Viera, V-I-E-I-R-A. My office is on Lafayette. We have multiple units.
I know exactly where your office is. I've driven by it many times. I know exactly where you are before the, the Home Depot. But anyway, the question I have, you're right on the Calabas when the turn is.
Right before the turn.
Yeah, right before the turn, yeah. I'm familiar with the apartment. And you said you have one and a half parking spaces per unit?
Yeah, basically, yes.
That's pretty good, but you have an overflow probably.
That was a requirement when it was built.
When it was built. So you have an overflow, you're already seeing overflow of tenants being parking in the street from your, you know, because you probably have more than one and a half cars per, per unit.
No, you're wrong. What happened is, is the condos down the street by, by, close to the old Motel 6
Right.
is basically parking in front of my property and walking all the way down. I mean, no one has a chance. The only one that has a chance are the ones that are handicapped because we have a handicap in front of my property. Besides that handicap parking, there's no chance for any of my, any of my tenants to even park there.
Yeah.
So...
So you're already seeing problems with parking there before, before the units are built? That's what you're saying.
Yeah, and then, like I said, there's also additional issues that are on that street, which I don't know if you guys bring up things about non-items on the agenda. If there is, I'll bring it up about what's going on in Calabasas, if you do have that item on, on, at the end. Which, I see you shake your head.
We've already had it at the beginning, so...
Oh, did you?
Yeah, public presentation, yeah, you just missed it.
Oh, I'm just saying this because on, on Calabasas, very simple concept, the old Motel 6 got sold, old Carols are gone, now that's the other place. But on that street right there, no one can even park there because you got the homeless that's been there for over two, over two, three years. And I complain, but it's funny. Property on Liberty Street or Scott Boulevard or Karen Drive, if you have there too long, you get a nice parking ticket or, or boarding notice to move your vehicles, and you're currently registered. You got a lady over there living out of, out of the camper, blocking the sidewalk, you can't walk. And nothing is being done because they're more privileged, so that's...
I, I think it's a, it's a topic that affects all of us. And I, I kind of agree with you. Now, one thing, this is, this is also 2097, right? Where we can't regulate the parking anymore of the state.
Right, because, because as Ms. Agrewall noted, this is within a half mile of transit. We actually can't require any parking for this site.
So the state of California, just so you know, has already told us that we can't even do this anymore. We can't mandate anything. Also, the planning commission makes recommendations to city council. And I hear, you know, the pain that people are going through. Obviously, I live here and see the same problems. So one of my suggestions is, please, please, talk to city council and come up there. They have the same process in that if you come in the beginning and nothing is on the agenda, and you want to bring something up, you have that right as well. And of course, you can always come back here if you like, but I would strongly recommend that kind of topic. Definitely, please bring it up to city council.
Just make one quick point.
Please.
Okay, one of, one of the points, just, Mr. Viera, just, you can stay there. One of the points is, you can take a picture and report it to the police department and say at the same times, if they're dropping, dumping waste and blocking the sidewalk, you can also say that because if you block the sidewalks, it's for wheelchairs and so on. And you're close, not only that, but you're less than two blocks away from a school, from elementary school, too. So you can bring that to their attention to the police when you call and report it.
The non...
They will take care of it.
The non-emergency number, okay?
They do not, I just did.
First of all, I'm very vocal. Number two, I have records at city, at the police department about all the issues you're mentioning, but it doesn't go nowhere. It's dead, it is dead, okay?
So hold on, I, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Stop, everybody, please.
Sorry.
No, no, no problem. You're, I'm with you. I, I agree that this is a problem for the city of Santa Clara. And absolutely, I, I want to see things done. City council has to be on it if the police are not doing what they should be. I, I say, number one, go down to the police station. It's different when it comes in person. Definitely, you know, hit up whoever your city council person is. And there are elections in 2026. But for right now, I have to stay with the business of this, and I'm, I'm sorry about that.
No, no, and I just want to mention one thing. Any one of you guys go down Calabasas, it is probably the only area down Calabasas from Wilcox down. That section from Al Camino to Pomeroy does not get maintained by the public service. There's all kinds of debris, overgrown stuff. I mean, like I said, it is like an orphaned child. And it's sort of, sort of peculiar when I've been attacked by a bunch of developers to buy my property to develop that whole corner and Mississauga. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
I understand, thank you. Okay, let's continue. Are there additional public people that want to speak?
No, we don't have any more speaker cards, and we do not have anyone online with their hand raised.
Yes, I'm sorry, you do, you do have the time for rebuttal, yes.
I think Mr. Viera is mistaking our project with 1575, which is across the street. We're not any close... We're not any close to his apartment complex. We're across the street opposite side. So I think, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we're not, we're not very close. I don't know if the other lot has come in with an application or not, but that's not us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so shall we move to close public?
Move to close public hearing.
Chair, if my, if I may just provide one clarification earlier about the affordable housing question, the project would provide one affordable unit and in lieu fees for the fractional of the unit.
Oh, thank you. Even with 11, that's 10%.
Under our ordinance, if you have 10 units or more, you have to provide one. So that's why I think, yeah, we, the math didn't add up, but we figured it out.
Because I did have a threshold twice, like maybe didn't meet the threshold of where it actually is mandated.
And it's in the conditions of approval for the architectural approval, which was already approved back in May, but we wouldn't attach it again as a condition in the subdivision. That's why I don't, you don't see it in your packet tonight.
So is that a condition that is going to be added now?
No, 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 no. It's, it's already binding on them as a condition of the development review hearing that was done in May. It's already part of their project.
Thank you for that clarification through the chair.
Okay, so anybody want to make a motion to close public hearing?
He did, and I'll second it.
I move to close public comment. I, verbal vote.
Go ahead and cast your vote to close public hearing. Thank you. The motion passed.
Discussions? Anybody want to?
I can take the motion if you want. Are you all ready? Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Biagini, you want to say something?
I was just waiting to make a motion on item one.
Either of you want to speak to make a motion? Please go ahead.
Priya's passing it to me. No problem. All right. I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend that the city council find that the proposed subdivision falls within the scope of the adopted SEQA addendum prepared for the project and no further analysis is required.
So Commissioner Biagini makes the motion and it's seconded by Commissioner Buza. Do you want to turn his microphone on?
Okay, very good.
We got it.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Mine is a verbal yes.
Thank you. The motion passed.
It's passed. Thank you very much.
I think there's a second recommendation.
It was the second one, go ahead.
Adopt, I move that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the vesting tentative subdivision map to merge the two parcels and create one lot subdivision for condominium purposes for 11 townhouses and common area at 1530, 1540 Pomeroy Avenue, subject to findings and conditions of approval.
Second.
Commissioner Chiracuru, motions?
The motion was made by Commissioner Chiracuru, seconded by Commissioner Biagini. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Verbal I from Chiracuru.
Thank you. The motion passed. Thank you.
Right there.
Okay, so item three. Public hearing action item, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, mitigated monitoring and reporting program, general plan amendment, rezoning and vesting tentative subdivision map, PLN 24-00267 and PLN 24-00332 for the property located at 1400 Coleman Avenue to allow the development of 142 townhouse units and associated on and off-site improvements. Staff?
Good evening, commission again. I will share my screen and make the presentation. So the project, so the project before you, or the request before you, before the planning commission is to make a recommendation to the city council on the following four items. The first one is the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration and the MMRP. The general plan amendment from regional commercial to high density residential. A rezone of the project site from commercial, regional to high density residential, R4, and a vesting tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes to allow the development of 142 townhouse units and associated on and off-site improvements at 1400 Coleman Avenue, subject to conditions of approval. So here is looking at the site highlighted in red to the right. It is a 3.8 acre site located on the north side of Coleman Avenue. And, and it is west of Broca Road. The zoning is commercial, regional, and the general plan is also regional, commercial. It is currently occupied by two-story office building and a one-story light industrial building and surface parking lot. The adjacent users include commercial and industrial users to the north and to the east. On the south is Coleman Avenue and there is the Costco over here. On the west is the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Office. Looking at a broader context, site context, the San Jose International Airport is about 500 feet northeast of the site. The gateway crossings project that was approved recently is on this corner over here in close proximity of the project site. And the Santa Clara train station is about 0.3 miles south of the property. Here is a look at the street view of the project site. It is, it is showing the current site. Looking at the general plan and zoning, as I said before, the general plan is regional commercial and this map shows the general plan designation of the surrounding properties. This is regional mixed use and this is on the, on the west is the light industrial. And, and the zoning now corresponds since after the comprehensive update that city did last year, the zoning matches with the general plan. And over here is the very high mixed use development or mixed use designations. Background on the project site, it is within the station area focus, station area focus plan. Currently, the staff is working on the specific plan and it is currently underway. As I mentioned before, the site is within 500 feet northeast of the project site and 0.3 miles north of Santa Clara Transit Center. That is served by Caltrain, ACE Train and multiple VTA bus routes. Also, in October 2024, city council approved a two-way class four protected bikeway along the east side of Coleman Avenue between Broca Road and Reed Street. Because this project is within the airport influence area and involves a general plan amendment, requires the airport land use commission referral, the ALUC hearing on this project is scheduled later this month. Here's a look at the project. It is, the project is proposing 142 for sale townhomes, townhouses at the density of 37.4 dwelling units per acre. On the right is a schematic rendering and the site plan. I will, I have a bigger picture of the site plan later in the presentation. The proposal includes studio, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom units. This includes four-story townhouse style buildings with a maximum height of 50 feet. The, the site has been designed, keeping in mind the future pedestrian connections that are, that are envisioned in the station area plan. And the common recreational space have been consolidated to provide a total of 0.45 acre of common space. A new 26 foot driveway, two feet, two-way private street provides ingress and egress to the project site. The project is conditioned to provide an eight-foot wide sidewalk along the project frontage with a six-foot wide landscape strip. A total of 20% of the total units, which is 29 units, are, will be affordable units. 10% of the units are proposed to be very low, very low density, very low units. And then the other 10% is a mix of low and moderate. The project provides 235 parking spaces exceeding the requirement of the par zoning code. It's a combination of 194 garage spaces and 40 surface parking spaces. Bike parking, 142 class one, each unit has a long-term parking, bike parking space and seven class two bike parkings are provided. The project would propose us to remove 59 existing trees and would plant 64 new trees, the balance, to meet the two is to one general plan requirement. They would be paying the in lieu fee to meet that minimum replacement ratio. Here is a look at the site plan. So this is the 26 foot private street that is provided. This is Coleman Avenue, the project frontage, an eight-foot sidewalk with a six-foot wide landscape strip. The site plan has been designed, as I mentioned, keeping in mind the pedestrian connections envisioned in the Santa Clara station plan to the north and to the east. The staff has, or the developer has worked with the staff to consolidate or cluster the units so that a usable, more usable open space is provided primarily at three places. So over here, here, and there is a dog run park over here. Here is the look at the, the tentative map. They would be doing the tentative map for condominium purposes for sale and ownership. Here is the street view. Again, it is a schematics, schematic architectural rendering right now. The developer is still working with the, with the staff on the architectural details, which will, par zoning code would be approved at the development review hearing later. Looking for the general plan conformance, the project includes a general plan amendment from Santa Clara Station, regional commercial to Santa Clara Station, high density residential land use designation. The project is consistent with several general plan policies or on balance, it is consistent with the city's general plan. These are the following points. They did do early community outreach, conducted two community meetings. In terms of density, the proposed density at 37.4 is in conformance with the Santa Clara Station, high density residential land use designation. The density for that designation is between 37 to 15 units per acre. It does provide adequate public facilities and infrastructure, onsite and offsite improvements, including private street utilities and landscaping. Does meet the landscaping requirements in the general plan, providing open landscape courtyards and setbacks allowing for additional trees and ground cover. Mentioned a few times before, pedestrian connections, they provide the sidewalk and the landscape strip, strip along the project frontage and also mindful of the future pedestrian connections. And lastly, they have, developer has provided a draft TDM plan consistent with the city's climate action plan that would, that proposes to reduce the VMT by 20%. Station area plan conformance, the project is consistent with several station area policies, the architecture, they are proposing a modern architectural buildings compatible with the surrounding development. The individual unit front doors are oriented towards the street frontage. Pedestrian connections, as mentioned before, connecting to the neighborhood and also within the property through various courtyards and green spaces. The, it also provides, the proposal, this development would provide a residential development within walking distance of the station, Caltrain station, providing diversity in the unit types in the area. And lastly, it does contribute to the arena numbers, providing 142 units. And including the 29 low income units or affordable units. Zoning, the project overall does require requesting a rezone from commercial, regional to high density residential. It is consistent with most of the regulations of our four zoning district. Under the state density bonus law, the project can request waivers if, if the regulations physically preclude the development of the project. And they have requested a waiver for the side and the rear setbacks and also the private and common open space. To elaborate on that a little bit, the side setback requirement is of 10 feet, whereas the project is providing five feet. The rear setback, the requirement is 20 feet. The project is providing nine feet is the minimum. But if you looked at the site, it angles a little bit, so nine feet is at the very narrowest area and then it kind of tapers and increases. For the private open spaces, the zoning code requirement, the R4 zoning district requirement is for 50% of the units to provide at least 60 square feet of private open space. The project provides, provides 50% of the units have balconies, but they are a little short of the 60 square feet at 52 square feet. For the common open space, as mentioned before in the presentation, the developer has worked with the staff to provide, you know, consolidating the units to provide common open space. However, it is still short of the required 28,000, I think, and they are providing about 18,000. So they are still short, but there are site constraints, et cetera. And so that's a waiver that they are requesting. Tentative subdivision map, in accordance with chapter 17.05 of the city code, the project requires a tentative subdivision map and the application proposes, applicant is proposing a two lot subdivision for residential condominium purposes. The subdivision committee reviewed and deemed the application complete and cleared on July 1st and included the conditions of approval that the commission received after the agenda was published. Because mistakenly, the conditions of approval that were attached with the agenda packet were for the architectural approval. So there was an error there. So there, that's why you were provided the correct condition, set of conditions of approval. Public outreach, two public outreach meetings were conducted. The first one in October of last year, which was an in-person meeting. And the second one on March 31st, 2024, which was a virtual meeting to engage the neighborhood community. The key topics discussed were site plan, consistency with the station area specific plan, ride share, drop off, pickup and delivery locations, affordability, relocation of existing commercial tenants and the project timeline. We did receive five letters of support for the project, mostly in favor of providing housing close to the university. One letter in opposition because they preferred single level housing in, versus a multi-level housing. For the SEQA analysis, the city prepared a mitigated negative declaration accordance with, in accordance with SEQA to address the potential environmental impacts. The topics, most topics were found to be less than significant. Underlined here are the, are the topics that could have potential impacts, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials and tribal cultural resources. And mitigations have been included in the MMRP to address those and bring them, make them to be less than significant. In support of the greenhouse gas emission reductions, the project will. In support of the greenhouse gas emission reductions, the project will implement an all-electric design. The MND was circulated and we did receive five public comments on the ISMND. And that included comments from the Maukma Aloney Indian Tribe, DTSC, San Jose Airport, VTA and the Valley Water. A response to comments was prepared and posted on the project's SEQA page. With that, the staff recommendation is that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the MMRP for the proposed residential townhome project at fourteen hundred Coleman Avenue. Adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from regional commercial to high-density residential. Number three, adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve a rezoning of the project site from commercial regional to high-density residential, R four. And last, adopt a resolution recommending city council approve a vesting tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes, subject to conditions of approval. This concludes the staff presentation. The applicant is here, they have a presentation. We also have Tyler Rogers from our David J. Powers SEQA consultant here to answer any questions that you may have.
So any questions for staff?
So my first question, has this gone through architectural review yet?
No, the architectural review will follow this after the general plan amendment and the rezoning and tentative map.
You might want to make a note, though, that the landscape layout as proposed is unsafe for egress and ingress from Coleman. It's a blocking line of sight for leaving and entering the complex. Also, Silicon Valley Power committed to being able to supply sufficient power to this given the this project, given the developments going on across the street?
They have reviewed the project and provided appropriate conditions of approval and they have been in loop for reviewing this project.
Just checking because it seems like it's a considerably large project, does need it all-electric, so it's going to have a more than normal amount of need. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I didn't.
Commissioner Biagini, then Commissioner Chair.
So I'm having a little difficulty trying to pull up the responses to the questioning, especially by the tribal groups. Can you let me know if their concerns were alleviated?
Yeah, so I can pull that up here and I can also respond to that. So the Maukma Aloney Tribe, their main concern was they were protesting that Tamian Nation is 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 an actual tribe. And so that was their primary concern and therefore we when we do the tribal consultation, the first step is that we request a list from NAHC and Tamian Nation is one of the tribes listed on that. And therefore, we are obligated to to make that consult with them. And also, they are one of the tribes that have requested to be to be notified of any project under AB fifty-two. And so therefore, the city is obligated to make that consult them. So appropriate response has been posted and I can pull it up on.
Could you pull it up, please? Thank you.
Tamian Nation is a tribe that has requested consultation on a large number of city projects. In fact, they are to date the only tribe that has requested consultation on any city project until we received this letter from Maukma Aloney Tribe. There is, however, a statutory period in which to request consultation. Tamian Nation submitted a timely request for consultation. Maukma Aloney Tribe did not. They were sent a letter, they acknowledged receiving the letter, but they did not request consultation until after the statutory period had ended. It would be lovely to engage in consultation for as long as possible, but this project, you know, was under timelines and we did not reopen the consultation period once Maukma submitted their additional comments. We did respond to their comments. Their main concern appeared to be that Tamian Nation would be the tribe contacted if tribal resources were discovered. And they questioned whether Tamian Nation was a legitimate tribe. However, given that Tamian Nation was the only one that had consulted with us at that time, we put in this condition they requested, which is that they will be the tribe that is notified.
Chair, I got a question.
So then if I'm understanding correctly, they blew the deadline, so that means we didn't answer their questions or concerns?
We responded in a letter to their questions or concerns. We have an obligation to respond to comments we receive on the SEQA document. We informed them that their comments did not raise any issues with respect to the adequacy of the SEQA document. Their concerns were more about the legitimacy of Tamian Nation as a tribe. And that is not for us to decide. We are obligated to consult with anyone identified by the NAHC as a tribe, which Tamian Nation is.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Real quick one. City Attorney, I got a quick question for you. How much time did you spend answering this and doing that since since that project already had an office building there for since the nineteen sixties and also everything else around there has been developed? How much time did staff spend answering these letters and listening to all of this request that they had?
The SEQA process is always extremely time intensive.
I'm talking about SEQA, I'm talking about answering the question to the tribes.
Well, in this in this response, it was part of the SEQA document. So it was actually our environmental consultant, David J. Powers, that prepared the initial draft response and then staff, we go through and revise it. And so, you know, I'm actually looking at my my markup right here. And so, you know, I would estimate a couple hours on my part, but that was probably all. I'm sure David J. Powers spent longer on it.
Okay, that's my request because I see, you know, something's been developed for so many years, all of a sudden this thing pops up, doesn't make any sense.
If you start digging and you find something, you're wanting to address it. Yeah, well, I think they have a right to, if they see it again, something happens, you never know. Commissioner Chair.
Thank you, and I agree with the chair. I had the similar questions. What were the other agency concerns? You had a list in your table that you had. Just high level is fine. Was it the traffic? Was it BTA?
It was it was from DTSC because they thought like, you know, soil impact. Let's see, to turn that out. Yeah, soil should be tested. The the phase one was already done and no results were found. That was that for that one. Actually, we have Tyler Rogers online and he may be more like, you know, be able to fluently explain and answer that question.
I'd like to have Taylor be prepared with the entities, questions and what high level, again, very high level, what the response was. I am sensing because are you by any creek here? Is there any creek riparian?
No, no, there's no creek here.
Okay, so typically, when we look at the tribes, there's also an additional level of sensitivity from when you are adjacent to more water resources. And so that when when one of the archaeological resources came up, by the way, I was just recently informed of a mammoth bone in a very high profound area. So that is something that we are very closely aware of in that this the archaeological resources are much more prevalent in our region. So just FYI, I'd like that to be answered. The other question for me, and it's very ironic, you know, how large projects like this actually make it much more simpler for our deliberation, like, sure. And when the smaller projects like, huh, did you ask this person, ask that person? But in this case, the the station area plan has design guidelines in its framework?
That is still under that is still under staff is still working on it, so it's not adopted.
We don't have any design, objective design guideline, any framework from the specific plan of stationary focus.
All we have are some general policies in the general plan about what the future stationary plan should contain. Right now, it's still a focus area.
And there is a task force?
Yes.
Has this project been brought to them?
I think they were notified of the both the community meetings. So they were sent the invitation to attend the community meeting, the task force.
Okay. Also, I didn't see how many people actually joined the community meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I should have mentioned that. The first time, I think they were, I have to remember, but I think it was like the first time we had in-person meeting, we had only like four or five people show up. And so we thought that maybe it might be a different avenue and do a virtual meeting.
Yeah.
And we did have about, maybe the applicant would remember, I'm not remembering right now, but they were about the same amount of people. And I can confirm, look at look back and confirm how many people attended it virtually. But mostly, there were some questions that we answered, but about not more than five or six people attended.
That was the most vaguest answer you could have given. Obviously, that's what you would have done. Okay, but good to know. The I'm asking because the stationary focus task force is a very active vocal group. And if you're telling me that they were not at the meeting or they did not submit, it does raise a deliberation from my part to say, make another effort. Because they have, this is a volunteer group as well, but they are actually trying to make the stationary plan much more pedestrian-friendly, they want design framework, they wanted to continue all the way to our downtown, connecting to the university. So I know, I know people and you know them just as much as I do, but I just want to make sure we recognize that there's a very vocal task force that we should just give another shot.
Chair, if I may, I do sit on that task force and this project has come up a number of times and our most current preferred land use plan shows this project as proposed in the one that the task force has blessed thus far in the process.
Great, that's all I needed to hear.
Yes, they're they're aware of this project and we've discussed it. And they were invited to the community meeting. And if I recall, one member was going to attend, but then wasn't able to, but yes.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you so much for being on the task. Thank you.
Commissioner Biagini?
This is a duplicate question to the first one because I hear a lot about folks that are upset that there's so much housing being built in Santa Clara. So once again, this project would help Santa Clara meet the state mandated housing numbers that we have to comply with? And you can give me the numbers again if you'd like.
Eleven thousand six hundred thirty-two, yes, it would help us in our progress to that goal incrementally. There are significant adverse consequences to the city if we do not make a concerted effort to continue to encourage the development of housing and particularly affordable housing. This project will provide us with one hundred forty-some units and a twenty percent affordability, which is above our standard requirement of fifteen percent.
Thank you, because I don't think many folks that in my neighborhood understand the consequences if we don't make moves towards building more housing. So I appreciate your answer.
I have one question, just one. The transportation, the one that you were referring to on your map, I think, was just the train station or did I have that wrong? Point three to public transportation?
Yes, that's the train station.
Was the, how about distance to the closest bus stop?
Santa Clara Station, which is a major transit hub. There are many buses there. It's our major stop.
So they have to go through Brokaw, go underground?
There's also bus stops on Coleman. At the corner of Coleman and Brokaw.
That's all I have. Thank you. Anybody else in commission have questions for staff? Nope?
I think we still need to respond to the question about the responses to the environmental comments. And I think our environmental consultant could help us with the Department of Toxic Substances Control question. That was the trickiest one. The others were fairly routine. The airport department just requested some standard language about, you know, how they'll need to get an FAA determination of no hazard. The Valley Water didn't really raise any substantive issues. And the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority didn't raise issues that were critical of the environmental document, although they did take issue with the density. They thought the density of the project as a policy matter was far too low. But as to the DTSC, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, they they recognized that while we were mitigating the identified impact, they thought we should do more. And perhaps our environmental consultant could explain the nuances there.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Tyler Rogers with David J. Powers. Glad to help provide some additional context. You are correct. Their comment letter was mostly concerned about just adding more oversight, more testing, which is typical of them to ask of many projects. But this project, we did the phase one already. The phase one did not identify anything onsite that was of concern. There is one off-site potential hazard about four hundred or fifty feet south of the project site, but that site was undergoing remediation already. And then the recent testing for that site didn't show any hazardous materials, soil vapor above, you know, screening levels for residential uses. So we were able to conclude that wasn't an issue and anything it would have migrated onto the project site itself. And then the soil on the site, while historically it was used for agricultural land, like many of the lands in Santa Clara, it's not anything new. You know, pesticides may have been used, although in this instance, it was based on historical maps, was used for dry farming, which did not use pesticides nearly as often. So the mitigation measure to have a soil management plan is typically what we include for, you know, sites that don't have any known or historical hazardous materials and it's just pesticide use that may exist. Compliance with that will make sure any soil removed from the site is, you know, tested, removed according to regulations. So there were, there was no, you know, reason for more oversight by TTS DTSC, the County Health Department. The SMP itself was sufficient to take care of any of the hazmat known on the site. So we responded with that in our memo and kind of concluded right there.
Thank you, Tyler.
Any questions?
Yes. Okay, Tyler, you still on?
Yes.
Okay, Tyler, did you go to the site and stand in the in the yard or anything around the site?
I've been to the site, yes. I guess I stood in the parking lot.
In the parking lot? Did you smell the jets, the fumes from the jet fuel in the parking lot?
Did not smell any jet fuel at the time.
Okay, what time did you go before? When the airport was closed or during operating hours? Because I was just there and it's really bad. Did you notice the body shop right next to the the site and the noise and the fumes coming from the body shop?
Correct.
You didn't, you didn't notice that?
No, I I noticed the body shop was there.
Okay, how about next to the body shop, there's also a metal shop? Did you notice the sand blasting and the noise and the dust from there? I guess not.
I'm aware that that could be an issue.
Right. Did you notice also the Lexus dealership that does repairs and auto bodywork right behind the property? Can you notice that? Okay, how come it's not mentioned in your report? Because that's that's really a big concern. Right now, Reed Hillview, they complain about fumes from small planes, but here we have the jets that I would just stand back there, not only the noise, but also the fumes that you smell from the jet fuel. I mean, that's that's really toxic if you don't, you know, you don't want to be standing that close to it and you're only, you know, like you said, five hundred feet away.
The hazardous materials section is primarily concerned with hazardous materials on the project site itself. The way we do that with the phase one environmental site assessment is hazardous materials professional looks at available data, known hazardous leaking sites, you know, reported to state websites. They visit the site, they look around. They visit the site, they look around, note any leaking tanks, you know, storage tanks above ground, anything that catches their eye. The Phase One didn't find anything like that. And none of the surrounding commercial and industrial uses have any open hazardous material case, materials cases. So it's inferred that they're all complying with, you know, regulations to control their hazardous materials. There's no spilling, there's nothing like that. The airport itself, the fumes and things like that are, the health effects of that are talked about in the air quality section of the SECO document as far as health risk is concerned. The fumes, it may be a nuisance, but unless they have a, you know, health impact itself, it's not going to be considered an impact. And while we discuss odors in the air quality section, in our opinion, they don't rise to the level of a significant impact by placing house.
That's in your opinion. How about the body shop next to the thing? Are you aware the body shops have a lot of toxic chemicals in there and they're a fire hazard? At the same time, there's hard to put out a lot of problems with that? Did you notice that? Or did you put that in your report at all? I'm just curious. I'm just saying that because if you're going to have residents living there, I don't want to have any problems or body shop all of a sudden blowing up and then you having all of this or toxic fumes from there affecting the residents. So I just wonder if your SECO report included that.
If it helps, Commissioner, the Fire Department has conditions F1 through several design performances prior to building permit issuance that hazmat clearance be obtained. That is also subject to the Santa Clara County Department of Environmental Health, State Water Resources Board. So they're Department of Toxic Substances Control. So, and also the Center for Recovery Response Department. So there's several entities who will cover hazmat.
Yeah, I'm very aware of that.
So they will cover that basis.
I'm aware of that and aware of those problems that I see.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
All right, staff, good. Shall I hear from the applicant then? Applicant, please.
Nope, you're good. It's perfect height, too.
You can bring it closer if you need to. There you go.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners for being here today. I'd also like to thank all the hard work of staff, Namisha, Leslie, Offshawn, and Xander, everybody.
Pick up, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
People from behind by popular demand.
My husband says that all the time. I can't hear you. My name, next slide, please. My name is Pamela Salas Needing, and I'm Vice President at City Ventures. I also am a Planning Commissioner in my own hometown, so I know the love of your home and what dedication it takes to be here. We're excited to be back here as we were the city's first solar all-electric project in the city of Santa Clara on Alviso Street in El Camino. But for those of you who don't know City Ventures very well, we're a sustainable Bay Area builder that primarily focuses on infill developments. Our company actually came to life as a core belief in creating partnerships with municipalities. Sustainability is of great importance to us. In our homes, you would have all the things that you would typically expect, such as Nest thermostats, EV charging, standard solar panels. But we also do things that you wouldn't expect, such as creatively building to use less lumber, designing our stormwater systems with infiltration in mind, concrete mixes with less Portland cement concrete, and solar battery charging. The 3.7 acre site, as Namisha noted, is located at 1400 Coleman, kitty corner to Costco, and the Gateway Classings Project, which we, you can see here, a true infill site. We know we aren't the first, but we're glad to be continuing the pioneering of housing in this area. The exciting part of this location, as Namisha noted, is that it's within a half a mile to Santa Clara University, Caltrain, and the new Broca Underpass, which was a great investment by the city of Santa Clara to really transform this area. The underpass and the future transit plans at the Caltrain Station seen here unlocks the exact type of urban development that is needed here. I myself was a student at Santa Clara University, proudly obtaining a civil engineering degree. And due in part to the high cost of housing, I myself had to commute to school until I was blessed with a scholarship that allowed me to live on and off campus. Now, as an adult that sits on the university's Advisory Engineering Board, I can tell you firsthand that retaining talent can be difficult, in part due to the high cost of housing. The site you can see here is currently being used for commercial development. Here are a few photos to get a sense of the site. As you can see, the original builder prioritized surface parking and circulation, so there's a lot of asphalt. So let's go back in time for a little bit. In 2010, the city of Santa Clara celebrated its past, its present, and its future. In all three phases, it contemplated an urban development dream of a land use guided by connectivity, sustainability, and place making, and called it the Station Area Plan. Since then, the city didn't stop in its pursuit of celebrating its future. It's been a long time coming. But in 2022, council appointed the Station Area Task Force, which, Leslie, thank you for sitting on that. Since then, the city and the task force have been working to implement the vision that started long ago with community meetings, property owner meetings, and regular task force hearings. We're proud to say that our project was integrated as the city's preferred development plan into, and incorporated into the Station Area Plan. There I am with a little star right there. Next slide, please. But the work didn't stop from there. On our end, we've had the pleasure of working on this project for over four years, from community meetings, university outreach, and work directly done with city leadership and staff. I'm not going to go over all of it with you, because, but here you can see all the effort. Staff was tough but fair. And it's what made the product worthy of being before you here today and is allowing me to make the request for the Planning Commission to approve our general plan amendment, our rezoning and vesting tentative map. Finally, to present to you the project. Namisha went over this beautifully, but just to reiterate, the design is utilizing the city's R4 high-density residential zoning standards. We went through so many iterations before striking the perfect balance. From the off-site elements, we focused on having a strong streetscape with front doors along the private, along the public street to really create that vibrancy. We actually dedicated a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk easement in order to provide that eight-foot detached sidewalk. And that with, along with new trees, to make it a really comfortable experience for the pedestrians along Coleman. For the onsite elements, although it's an urban site with high density, there's really intentionality with each and every space, from a community garden, dog run, as Namisha had noted, wooner passeos with beautiful string lights, open lawn areas, shade trees, overhead trellis with lounge and seating, there is a place for all. Lastly, at the center of the project is the spine or the urban streetscape, which ties all these elements together. The goal was to create a sense of place, a sense of homecoming, and a sense of warmth, so that when you return from a long day at work, it feels good to be in your home. All these elements resulted in what you see here, which is a 142-stacked condominium project that contains housing opportunities, from studios to three-bedroom units varying from 370 to 2,000 square feet. As Namisha had noted, we had worked through several iterations. And a big important part of that was our affordable housing that we worked on with Elaine, which resulted in the 25 units that are spread throughout the plan types. Regardless of deed restriction, the intention of these homes are to be affordable by design for the first-time homebuyers and the missing middle to be able to participate in the housing market. Next slide, please. And here's a few imagery of our landscaped areas that I was noting. In particular, my favorite is a community garden and as well as a dog run. Next slide, please. So now, here we are, 15 years since after the city of Santa Clara celebrated its past, present, and future with the ability to bring forward its future into reality. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Biagini?
Not so much a question as a compliment for illustrating how long it takes from inception to coming before the Planning Commission, its years. And that during those years, having community meetings that can, as far as I'm concerned, only improve the development of a project. So I just wanted to thank you for being clear about that.
Anyone else have questions? Sure.
First off, how can anybody not think that that was an excellent presentation? And who could have said no? I wonder how you actually manage your organization. But thank you, really well done. Happy to have this project here. I do have a question. If it is that welcoming, why four stories? And how are you aging in place?
That's a great question. We, what we wanted to do was work with the city of Santa Clara, knowing what, the city of Santa Clara knows what the constituents wanted. And it sounded like density and being able to provide smaller homes versus a single family. But the whole point of them being smaller is that they're affordable by design. So in that way, I'm able to provide homes that still have, I mean, the 2,000-square-foot home is bigger than my own house with my, with my small children. But you're able to provide the homes in a smaller aspect. And that's why when I saw that there was less living space and kind of that four-story element, I wanted to provide that intentionality with the landscaped areas to get people outside and in a community being together.
And you're talking your parents and your grandparents?
Whoever can be out here.
Okay. Know that they don't live outside, because I know the hardship of a stared home. They will have to move. You're basically making them move, even if they chose this to be their long-term home. Is there a bedroom on the first floor at least in your design?
No, there is not.
Okay, please do consider, because whatever the comments were, we would like to be a city that also ages in place and not just be a transitional housing market. We are a very thriving job-oriented housing need. So we have Nvidia, proud of them, they're expanding. We have Sutter coming in with the east-west campuses. So we are jobs growth indicators. However, if your housing is just for a young family, you know, can run up and down the stairs, then you're not really enabling the full community's needs. So please consider in your design, at least on the ground floor, to have a bedroom that is with a bathroom.
Any other questions?
Yes. Just wait a second. Yeah, that's what I'm waiting for.
Sorry.
They taught you how to write a little bit faster at Santa Clara University. But anyway, that's why she did such a good presentation, because she went to Santa Clara University. My goddaughter Ursula was an engineer, too.
You're going to take notes.
Yeah. Now, did you have to do the vote, to build a vote for the racist?
Yes, sir, ASEE.
Yeah. Did you do that?
I was also president of the SWE, the Women in Engineering.
Good, so you probably, my goddaughter probably knows you. Anyway, let me get down to start from a few little questions that I have. I'll try to move real quick here. One is the, the housing that you're building in a way is, I consider that to be almost transitional homes, like a starter home for some families to get started and then be able to trade and move up. You know, we all, very few people could afford to buy, you know, multimillion-dollar homes right off the bat. So that's one of the things. Two is, do you have any idea what the cost? I know it's going to be, that's a hard one for you, to project the cost, because, you know, things is going to change in a matter of time. By the time you start now, by the time you finish building it with materials and labor and so on, things are going to be changing. But what is your projected and the guest estimate with the starting price and the, of the homes are going to be?
For the affordable?
No, forget the affordable, the regular homes.
Okay. So they're actually going through a broad cost. What we had told the city was that the studios, we were going to price them the same price, whether they're deed restricted or not. So that was first and foremost, because we wanted to be able to provide that entry regardless of whether it's deed restricted. For the, that was the only one, Commissioner Buzza, that I had remembered in my mind, because that was something I wanted to offer. I need, I would need to get back to you on what, a three-bedroom unit? These are small.
Right, so I see you just said maximum is about 2,000 square feet.
That, that is the biggest unit.
The biggest unit.
Yeah, but you're talking about like...
The 800s to the 2 million?
2 million sounds a little...
Well, for the big, bigger units.
Yeah, but it's a four-story town. Homes, it's not a single-family home. So you have the limit. We really kind of cater to that missing middle. That's really what our company strives.
Now, I'll make a quick suggestion. I don't know who your architect is, but you got, these are the ugliest units I've ever seen in my life. It looks like it was done with little kit with little Legos. We had the same thing. We just had across the street, somebody was going to build a hotel, and it was very similar to what your units looked like. And we had a few responses, people saying, wow, that thing is really ugly. You're going to put that there? And this is what, I was kind of disappointed that to bet the architects now from Santa Clara University, maybe they would have come up with a little bit better designs for the, for the homes. But thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Biagini, did you have questions?
I just followed up with something that you can point to 20 years from now for your kids and say, with pride, I helped design that. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions then. How many parking spaces are here?
I believe 234, but...
It's like 194 plus 40. 194 plus, 194 garage spaces and 40 surface parking spaces for a total of 235.
That's average for how many units? 140 units?
There are 142 units.
There's 142 units and 235 spaces.
Because they're not parking on the street, for sure.
No, this is why we gave extra parking.
Thank you. That's really great. So just to bring up Lance's, Commissioner, his point about blocking on Coleman, like that corner and making it blind. Coleman is very, very busy, and during rush hour, it's awful. When you were, the way you laid that out, was that one of the considerations? Like, yeah, we're okay, because we can see that it's going, you can still see it as you're coming around the bend and such. So, I mean, that would be one of my concerns, because I drive that area. And it's not one of my favorite ones, because everybody is like, either they're trying to get to Costco and they're cutting across lanes, which is awful, or they're trying to go to other places, especially Airfield. And so when you looked at that, that would be the only thing that I would say is really make sure that you consider the safety of that, if you would, please.
Yes, I know that the civil engineer in concert with the traffic engineer created site-distance triangles in order to provide the setback of the building from, from Coleman in order to help those sightlines. And those triangles are specifically created by the miles per hour that you're driving.
Now, when you say miles per hour, are we talking about the real miles per hour or the ones that are posted?
That is a question for the traffic engineer.
Okay, I'm not going to call you on it right now. I just, just, it's like, I know what people do and how they drive. And I will not claim how, what I do over there especially, because I don't kind of do it in a public forum. But needless to say, that would be one of the considerations. People do drive fast and such. And I think we're going to have other issues because of Costco and such, and how much, you know, people want to drive down there. So that's, as long as you've got that and take into account, then thank you, that'd be great. The fence that joins where the... The fence that joins where the airport is, that area of the airport, Commissioner Boosa, do you know if that's all just not commercial but more private stuff?
That stuff from Signature, that's the private jets that are really... Private jets right now. Are really busy. They have more takeoff and landings than the regular airlines right now.
Now, is that... What's the height of that fence with the airport?
I believe we... At the back, it's a six-foot high fence.
Do you refer just in the microphone, please? Sorry.
I believe it's a six-foot high fence, but I can go grab the plans.
Okay. Now, I know that our fence heights normally are... You can't go higher than six. And I was kind of wondering if that would be... There would be an exemption because that is an airport. And for two reasons. One, obviously, you don't want somebody jumping a six-foot fence. I know there's other places you could jump into the airport. I got it. But the other reason would be also possibly diverting some of the blast from the jets or whatever. I don't know.
I can help you out a little bit on that. Their property itself, it sits higher than the property behind it. So their property is a few feet higher.
I'm sorry, their property?
Their property is. And then the other... I think maybe about three or four feet. And then the other property is down below.
Okay. And then along that fence line, are you going to have any kind of hedges or anything that would kind of, you know, soften any of the stuff coming across?
Okay, so I found out, Namisha, it's on sheet L-4 of the development plans, which I think on the PDF would probably be the last four pages. So it is a six-foot-high property line wall that's all around there with little pilasters every so often. And then, pardon me, your question about softening, is that along the back, the side?
The back of the wall between the airport and yourself, like, is there going to be like greenery that would kind of like grow a little taller so that it would kind of soften anything? Also, being that this is a residence and there's children, you know, I remember when I was a kid, some of the crazy things that I did. And a six-foot wall would be like a nothing thing for me. So I'm just kind of curious, when it comes to the safety of children, stuff like that, what considerations of any have you put in there for that? And I don't mean it in a disrespectful way.
Yeah, no, it sounds like I need to see what my five-year-old can do if he can climb up that... She can climb up the wall.
Not the five-year-old I'm worried about, it's the 15.
No, 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 no. My five-year-old, who went to Santa Clara when later on, not at five, he could climb walls.
Interesting.
So I'm thinking of him.
So what we have... So it's a six... It's six-foot-high property line. And then around there, we have the dog run. And we also have a little community walk, picnic tables. So there is quite the setback for that buffer area between that wall and people's front... Thank you, Namisha. You can see it on the right.
Sure, but I mean, kids can still walk back there, right?
Yes. It is meant to...
So, okay, that would be my only other comment about that is what maybe we could do to mitigate a little bit of, you know... I mean, you can always tell parents to watch their kids, but we know what happens. We don't have to go over all of what our kids did. I know what I did for sure, and I was a bad boy.
But that's a good question to staff. Are they able to do any level of barbed or other protection higher than the six feet to minimize any jump overs?
Consider it. Actually, it's a street behind this property.
Is there? I don't know. I'm just going off of the question.
Is it a street or...? No, it's part of the airport.
It looks like a property, airport.
Yep. It's a parking...
It's just property of the airport.
It's Martin.
Yep.
Okay.
So you've got other businesses.
Okay. So it is... I thought... I'm sorry, I thought I was right up against the airport. It's not. Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
The concern is just not geographically.
Got it.
Okay, good. You're fine then. Let them jump.
Let me make a question regarding your six-foot fence. Staff, excuse me. There's a property right on the corner of Santo Mast and Monroe in New apartments. I think it's Home Key. The wall is higher than six feet backing up against those homes back there. So you could do something like that in there, but cement walls or brick or whatever they are.
So they... I think our zoning code requires a masonry wall when a residential is abutting a non-residential. So that's something that is a requirement. In that particular case, it was a residential abutting a residential.
We can make an exception.
Correct.
We're the ones that make the rules on that. So we can make an exception for them to go ahead and put a higher masonry wall for there.
No.
Why not?
We require a separate... Because the city code is the city code. You can get a minor modification to go beyond the standards by up to 25% if that's what you're talking about. So you could go up to 7.5, but you can't simply sort of willy-nilly ignore the code.
I wouldn't call it willy-nilly. I'd go making sense, you know, regarding to the, you know, to the issues at hand.
Okay. But unfortunately, I don't think you're empowered to do that tonight.
Not tonight. No, tonight, we are just classifying, changing it over from plain industrial to residential.
Tentative map.
Yep.
So who does get to make that decision? They would have to apply for that?
Yeah, they would apply for the minor mod, but suppose... I mean, I suppose, you know, she changes her mind, doesn't... Refuses to do it. I'm thinking, could they... Could they make it a condition that this is contingent on it?
No, 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 I don't want to do that. I understand where you're going, but no, I would not want to make that happen like that.
Okay. They simply need to apply for a minor mod to increase the fence height to 7.5 feet. And then the director would approve it. It wouldn't have to come back to this hearing.
Okay. Perfect. If you feel that reviewing it, that would be of help.
I will definitely review. I do want to add that eventually, the station area plan has that wall coming down to be an opening because it has... Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. Is it a gated opening or no?
Leslie, maybe you can... There's a connect... It was the whole reason why I kept that whole area open to continue the city's dream of the station, yes, in the back. Because the city wants to continue that.
It's almost like an archery?
Yeah, like it's supposed to connect... I swear I'm not making this up.
Dealership area containing it all the way to Martin?
It...
Because that's what we were talking about.
Pictures worth a thousand words. So let's bring the picture up.
Yeah. The city has a beautiful plan that shows...
Connections. Pull up station area plan. Leslie has it.
Oh, Sandra.
Okay, so this is draft, right? This is still all in progress. But this...
Where would this property be?
The site is located right here. And so the rest of the station area, we have broken up into street connectivity and then pedestrian walkways.
So the blue is the pedestrian?
The blue is streets.
Yeah. And the blue is basically angling, though. It's not taking the property.
Right, because the property is right here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
One of my concerns still is chair is the noise factor with the airport because right now, we, you know, we have complaints from people who live on the north side when the jets are taking off. Not only you have the jets taking off, but you have the most of the loud noises coming when they land and do the reverse thrust on the engines. And it's almost right directly with your, you know, with your property because the reverse thrust happens right by the tower. And you're almost beating the tower. So that's a lot of... I mean, you're talking a lot of noise when you're doing a reverse thrust in there.
We actually have in our project STC windows. It's like a thicker... I'm not an architect, but Namisha, I don't know if you can better explain it. It's a thicker rating of a window to make sure that the neighbors or the... Pardon me, the residents are happy in their place and they're not complaining about noise. So that extra...
Or vibrations.
That's right. So all of that, there was a very strong acoustical study that was done as part of the SEQA. And that was one of the items that we already incorporated into the project. Fully understanding.
Okay. Any other questions? Shall we open the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Public, anybody Elizabeth that we have that wants to talk?
We do not have any hands raised online, did anyone? Yes, we do have a speaker card for Dylan Payne.
Hi there. My name is Dylan Plain. I am with CBRE. And I'm here as a representative of Grant Associates, who is the current owner of the property and seller in this contemplated transaction with City Ventures. As Pam stated, this process began in 2022 when Grant Associates started to consider selling the property. With the building's low coverage ratio and older construction, it was a clear candidate for redevelopment. We began by meeting with the city's economic development department to better understand their vision for this area. And that's when we were informed of the Santa Clara Station specific area plan and that process that was about to unfold in this area and encompassing this property, 1400 Coleman. A key priority of the plan, the specific plan, is residential housing, taking advantage of the transit-oriented opportunity around the train station where Caltrain, Amtrak, Ace Rail, and eventually BART will service. For this reason, we felt that City Ventures would be an excellent partner for Grant Associates and the city of Santa Clara to help execute their vision. City Ventures product offering is for sale townhomes with an affordability ratio of 20% offering homeownership at a price point that is attractive for our community. It takes time for a neighborhood like this to transform from industrial to residential, which is where it's heading. And we believe that City Ventures project will help catalyze this transformation. Their leadership will give others confidence in the future of this neighborhood, being a lively environment for residents, employment, and transit users, taking advantage of the station and transit opportunities nearby. Grant Associates is in support of this project and is looking for the planning commission's approval to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Anyone else Elizabeth?
No, unless anyone else wants to speak, no other speakers.
Move to close public hearing. I'm sorry, there's a... That's right, there's a rebuttal. If you'd like to rebuttal, the person you're buying it from.
Okay.
All right.
Move to close public debate.
I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
It was Commissioner Biagini made the motion and Commissioner Boosa seconded.
Thank you. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
I got it.
Commissioner Biagini?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had.
It's okay. I went ahead. Okay, very good. The motion passed. Thank you.
Shall we have a discussion before making a motion or someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a... There's no discussion. I'll go ahead and make a motion on the first recommendation. Move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt... Ooh, typo here. Adopt the adopt. The mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring or reporting program for the proposed residential townhome project at 1400 Coleman Avenue.
Second.
staff recommendation one. Go ahead and record your vote, please. Very good. Thank you. The motion passed.
You want me to keep going?
Second item?
Okay. Motion that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the general plan amendment to change the land use designation from regional commercial to high-density residential.
Second. I had to do one tonight.
I don't know who's saying it, so it was Chair Kurt...
It was moved by...
I understood that, yes. Thank you. Motion was made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Chair Kurt... Sorry. Kurt.
You absolutely have the right to make seconds. You have the right to make motions.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
The president of the United States Senate typically does not, and some people try to analogize.
All right, somebody would like to make the third one?
You want me to go?
Go.
Okay. Adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve a rezoning of the project site from commercial regional CR to high-density residential R4, subject to conditions of approval.
Second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Chair Kuru, seconded by Commissioner Biagini to approve staff recommendation three. Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Going to the fourth, adopt a resolution...
One moment, please.
Hold on.
Thank you, the motion passed.
Go. Go, Priya, go.
Please, go ahead.
Adopt a resolution recommending city council approve a tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes, subject to conditions of approval.
Second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Chair Kuru, seconded by Commissioner Biagini to approve staff recommendation four. Go ahead and cast your vote. Okay, very good. Thank you. The motion passed.
I just want to share a comment through the chair. Today, we've been on... Thank you, Commissioner Boosa, I feel your love. We've had 151 housing units. It's been a really amazing night. These are projects that actually excite me because we are supporting the housing need. And I'm super pumped because we are also building our job market. So these are like the projects that really keep Santa Clara going. So thank you, staff, and thank you applicants. Please bring more people to our city.
Thank you very much. You're good.
You're good.
Unless you want to rebut. Okay. Thank you very much.
Great presentation, too.
Does anybody need a break?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break.
Okay. I'll bring my charger. I'll bring my charger.
The commission was having a disagreement during that pause, so, okay. Everybody's here, so let's go ahead with the next item. Item number four. Action on a variance PLN 24-00514 to locate a six-foot wrought iron fence within the 10-foot street-side setback and within the 20-foot front setback proposed at 572 Woodhams Road, continued from May 21, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Planning Commission.
Speak up.
Thank you. Good evening. Let me share my screen. Good evening, Planning Commission. This is Meha Patel, and I will be giving the presentation for the project at 572 Woodhams. The request is for a variance to locate a six-foot wrought iron fence within the required 10-foot street-side setback and 20-foot front setback. A variance is required under Santa Clara City Code, Chapter 18.124, when the proposed project does not meet the required development standards for the zoning code. The existing site is .22 acres and has the general plan designation of very low-density residential and R16L single-family zoning. The surrounding uses are also single-family residential. The required standard for fence location on a single-family parcel is a minimum 10-foot corner street-side setback for a six-foot fence with an additional foot of lattice. The applicant has already constructed outside the property line at the back of the sidewalk in the public right-of-way. The zoning code allows for a maximum three-foot fence within the required 10-foot street-side setback and 20-foot front setback area as shown in the highlighted lot configuration on the right. All other areas shown in the brown color area can have a six-foot fence with one foot of lattice. The rightmost graphic shows the existing wood fence that is consistent with the Santa Clara Classic Code, the old code, and the erected six-foot wrought iron fence outside of the required setbacks. The images show the wrought iron fence as constructed right now outside of the setbacks in the public right-of-way. These are the site images. The top shows the existing wood fence prior to the installation of the wrought iron fence that is consistent with the Classic Code. And the bottom picture shows the installation of the wrought iron fence as it is constructed right now. The existing lot configuration provides adequate condition to locate the fence to meet the zoning code requirement. The existing corner street-side setback to the residence is approximately 16 feet. The required setback is minimum 10 feet. The lot size is 10,825 square feet when the zoning code's lot size requirement is 6,000 square feet. The existing residence is approximately 2,890 square feet. The applicant has adequate lot area and setback distance to locate the fence to meet the required minimum 10-foot corner street-side and 20-foot front setback for a six-foot fence. The property line is 10 feet from the face of curb. The installed fence is outside of that property line and in the public right-of-way. If the variance to keep the fence at this location is approved, the applicant will need to obtain an encroachment permit from the Public Works Department. These are the required variance findings that the project must meet in order to be approved. The subject property does not have unusual conditions. The lot area, lot is larger than the required minimum lot size. The granting of the variance is not necessary for the enjoyment of the property. The homeowner could locate the fence to meet the 10-foot street-side setback. Granting of this encroachment would be a special privilege as the property is comparable to many R16L zoned lots in the neighborhood and throughout the city. Additionally, the wrought iron fence is outside of the property line and in the public right-of-way. Granting the variance may introduce visual impediments for the users of the neighboring driveway and on Fourth Avenue and disrupt the harmonious streetscape of the neighborhood. Planning Division received two public comments before the agenda was posted, which have been included in the staff report. Two additional public comments were received after the meeting agenda was posted and will be included as post-meeting material. Public comments included concerns regarding the fence's appearance and compatibility, traffic safety, refuse, and landscaping materials stored in the space between the wood and wrought iron fence. And we did receive one public comment in support of the fence. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission deny the variance application. CEQA guidelines, Section 15270A, provides that CEQA does not apply to projects which a public agency rejects or disapproves. If the Planning Commission was to approve the variance, the project would be categorically exempt per Class 3, Section 15303E, new construction, which allows for construction of fences. Staff recommends that Planning Commission adopts a resolution denying the variance to locate a six-foot wrought iron fence within the required 10-foot street-side setback and 20-foot front setback proposed at 572 Woodhams Road, subject to findings. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, can you go back to the slides to show the 10-feet requirement? Is that 10-feet requirement for the fence?
Sorry, the wood fence or the wrought iron fence?
Yeah, I mean, you have a slide show the requirements 10 feet, right? For corner lot only or for all the lots?
Yeah.
Aside?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So the 10-feet requirement? It's for corner lot only or?
It applies, yeah. So the 10-feet is for the corner laws. For this particular property, the red box shows the lot configuration, and then in the front is 20 feet. Yeah.
So the side is 10 feet?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, not five feet?
No, it's not five feet. In the Classic Code, it used to be different where it was for corner laws. They could provide the fence, six-foot fence with one foot of lattice along the property line, but 20, 35 feet setback from the front.
Okay.
Along the corner.
Yeah, the original, the wood fence, is that 10 feet or five feet?
It is, I believe, on the property line as consistent with the Classic Code.
Oh, that one is on the property line?
Yes.
So the property line, right on the, I see.
Yeah, as you can see in the tract map, the property line, and we confirmed with Public Works, actually is 10 feet from the face of curb, so the sidewalk is approximately five feet. So they would need to provide additional five feet from the back of the sidewalk. That's where their property line would be.
Okay, so then where is the property line? It's the curb on the street back five feet?
Correct, yeah.
That's the sidewalk?
So face of curb would be the start of the sidewalk. From there, 10 feet into the property, that's where the property line is. It looks like the sidewalk is five feet, so from the back of the sidewalk, there would be a five foot. That's where the property line is. And then according to our zoning code standards, they would need to provide a 10-foot setback from that property line in order to do a six-foot fence at the corner side.
Just to be clear, I didn't hear, from the five foot from the curb, then from there, how much more?
Another five feet, and then that's where the property line, and then another 10 feet, that's where the setback line is, and that's where they can have a six-foot fence from the zoning code.
Then, wow. I mean, when I walk around the neighborhood, then I don't think any fence meets this requirement.
So our old code had, if you can look at the yellow line on this graphic, that depicts what our old code, the Classic Code fence requirements were, so they could locate the six-foot fence at the property line. They would need to confirm with Public Works exactly where their property line is. Often, the property line isn't exactly where the sidewalk ends. It's usually three to five feet, in this case, 10, five feet from the back of the sidewalk.
Yeah, since, yeah, I met the owner and I visited the site. Actually, when they first have this issue, so actually then I start walking the neighborhood, I pay attention to this kind of fence thing. Then I noticed actually many, many fences built like this. Not only this one, also a lot, a lot. Fans, they don't have fans, but they have plants right by the sidewalk. It's more than six feet, maybe 10, 20 feet. So my question is, what's the purpose of our code to request?
Well.
Let me finish, okay.
Sorry.
What's the purpose, right? So, and the second question is, so many violations. Let's see if somebody today annoyed, go around the city, report to the city, so should the city correct everyone? Yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
Just, well, to clarify, many of the fences you identified would probably be legal non-conforming if they were consistent with the old code. The item before you tonight is this metal fence that was illegally constructed under either the old code or the new code, so.
Yeah, another question is, you mentioned the old code and the new code. When did the new code got adopted? And?
When was the new code adopted?
Yeah.
January 2024? And it was affected February, yeah. January 2024 is when it was adopted, Commissioner.
Is that before this case or after this case? Yeah, the reason I ask is, if this case, if they built their fence before this new code adopted, why should we ask them to, you know, to meet the new code?
It was before this code case. This application was submitted in June 2024.
So the new code was already?
The code complaint.
So they applied for the variance after the new code was in effect.
But.
So they are.
But, yeah, when did you guys install the fence, before the new code or after? Before the new code or after the new code?
Just to clarify also, the wrought iron fence would not be consistent with the old code as well, with the classic code as well, because it is outside of their property, it's in the public right-of-way.
Okay, it's literally on city property.
Yeah, but at the same location, if you build a 3-feet iron fence, that's okay.
They...
But, but...
It's still not on their property. It is literally in the city public right-of-way. It would have to be moved and then lowered in height.
Yeah, and if they, if, I think...
To meet the requirements.
A variance is approved to be outside of the property line, they would need to get an encroachment permit from Public Works, so...
The Planning Commission could not force Public Works to approve an encroachment permit. They would have to evaluate the proposed encroachment permit for a variety of factors, including public safety, access, yeah, and it would be a case-by-case. I mean, there's indemnification and insurance requirements. It's not a done deal by any means, and frankly, I'm kind of skeptical.
Even if we approve it?
A high possibility.
That was one of my questions, that was one of my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wang, you're done for the moment?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
You can always come back later.
Yeah.
Commissioner Biagini?
Thank you, Priya, that was actually one of my questions. If we approve it and Public Works denies it, what happens? They have to take the fence down?
Yes.
Okay, so clarification, the wood fence that we see in the photographs, and I've been by that area, that one was okay?
Yeah, they can continue to keep the fence as is, because it was prior to the new zoning code.
It's legal non-conforming now.
Legal non-con, okay, well, that doesn't have to come down, is what I'm getting at.
Correct, it can stay in perpetuity.
Here's my concern, and... My husband's done some construction work, and it would seem to me that a wrought iron fence is not something that you and the adult sons help build, that's something that you would, I'm gonna assume, get a licensed contractor to build. I would further assume that a licensed contractor is gonna say, hey, whoa, you need a permit for this, and unless you get it, I can't proceed. Okay, so that aside, was there any approach to the city at all before the wrought iron fence went up? That you know of?
Not that I know of.
Okay, that's all.
All right, so disclosure, I have met with the property owners and saw the property. I think the, one question I have for legal is, I did see other properties around the area that had fences, whether they were on the right-of-way or not, I don't know, but they were built out in a similar fashion, and I'm wondering if there's any legal precedents where all of a sudden, if the city does not enforce what's going on as illegal, at some point, does it become like, yeah, you know, if you're not gonna stop us, we're gonna do it, and you can't do anything about it?
Right, so if a whole bunch of people break the law, does that make it okay? In other words, the city has prosecutorial discretion, there's, you know, we are a complaint-based city, we enforce the code when we get a complaint. If we don't get a complaint for this area, we don't drive around looking for code enforcement violations, we don't have the staffing to do that. But the law is, if we, we have no obligation to enforce any code enforcement violation, and if we fail to enforce the code in any particular case, that doesn't mean the law goes away. We can still enforce it tomorrow, we can still enforce it 10 years from now if it's still on the books. So, yeah, if all your neighbors also break the law, I would still encourage you to follow the law because you can still, you can still get code enforcement.
At some point, you would encourage people not to enforce the law?
Well, I understand the, I understand it's an incentives issue.
It's an incentives issue.
But it's not a legal presidential issue.
Right.
The fact that we haven't enforced it for the neighbors, and I don't know anything about these other fences you've referred to, perhaps they're legal non-conforming, perhaps they're not, but, I mean, if they're all illegal, then Commissioner Wang's scenario arises and someone can go and complain.
Is the key thing here, the fact that they built off their property? That be one?
Well, that and they apparently did it without even a building permit, which is a crime. I mean, you need to get a building permit, you need to work with planning, you need to put it in the right place, you need to use a material that's acceptable, and especially, you need to not build it on city property. So that's, I don't know, if I had to, you know, rank the offenses, I would say, building it on property that's not even your property is the most significant one, but they should have known, they should have gotten a permit.
I have two questions, one on the legality, since you received it as a complaint, if you do not react to the complaint, approval denial, is there legal possibility of the complainant, that's a word, actually suing? Because you have not met the code?
No, no. We are not, again, prosecutorial discretion, the failure of the city to enforce somebody's desire, you know, I mean, you'll get, you'll get very, you know, aggressive neighbor disputes where they basically start filing code enforcement complaint after code enforcement complaining each other and want the city to do, you know, and that's not what's happening here, but I'm just suggesting, again, it doesn't present liability for the city if we don't enforce.
Okay, and the second question, what Commissioner Wang was referring to, is there a restriction on the height of natural landscape?
Yes, we can check on that.
Well, I would also ask, it's either the height or the width, because I definitely have complaints about widths of some people's vegetation over the street, I'm curious.
Yes.
Right, well, I mean, I know our code has language about, you're not supposed to artificially increase the grade at your property line so that you can add a fence, our code actually specifically prohibits that, so you can't suddenly have a big hill right on your property line. On the vegetation, I don't know, except I know that in my backyard, we're trying to grow our hedge as far, as tall as possible.
And that's exactly the neighborhood I have.
Yes.
Where the hedges are practically 6, 7 feet.
Yes.
Depending on how tall they wanna grow.
To my knowledge, we don't have a limitation on that, except as it affects power lines or, yeah.
If the vegetation would be on the street side of the fence, is that legal, or would it have to be on the other side of the fence?
I'm sorry, are you asking if the property owner could go onto the city property and plant vegetation or?
Were there wooden fences right now?
Uh-huh.
Is that literally on the property line?
That is on the property.
Yes.
Anything over the other side is our property, city property.
Correct.
Okay, I understand now, never mind.
The maximum height, which is 3 feet, 6 feet, and 3 feet in the front and street-side setback, applies to fences, walls, hedges, and screen and shrubbery.
I stand corrected.
And so that means that shrubbery can't be over 6 feet?
Commissioner Biagini?
Is that in the front, or just, is that only in the front or in the...
I don't, I don't know how we even implement that.
The fence section, table.
Well, I wanna be not too dramatic, because I feel sorry for the people here, and I wanna, I wanna be respectful, my apologies.
The next page.
Wow, how interesting, I didn't realize we regulated the height of hedges and shrubbery.
To be 6 feet?
I live in San Jose, I think, then it's...
3 feet in the setback area and 6 feet anywhere else.
Yeah.
3 feet? In the front?
That's what I'm saying, the setback, really?
The front setback.
New property.
Street-side setback.
And in the front of the house, when you're in a corner, what's the maximum?
Well, that definitely is not being enforced.
Yeah, because I, you know, you can't see.
Okay, we're good for now, can we?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, yeah, I understand.
Yes, we are good.
I've had people tell me that all the time, make thermos bushes and they won't come over you, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, let's back to this, okay, so any more questions for staff? Okay, good, thank you.
No.
My apologies. Applicant, would you like to go ahead and please talk? You have to talk into the mic, and I'm gonna try and turn it on for you. It's on? There you go, good.
First of all, I want to say thank you. I just flew in last night, a little bit tired from Vietnam, because I had a stroke. That's why I have been, this case have been ragged on so long until now. First of all, I want to thank you everybody, and I have been work closely with Leslie regarding my fence, and allow me to explain the reason I had a fence. I have lived in 572 Woodhams for most 25 years, and until then, I has run into so many problems lately for the last 7 years. I couldn't sleep, first of all, you see that in the front, I have 30 feet, I meet more than requirement of the city, that 20 feet in the front. I sit on the side only, but the side, I have the existing wooden fence already at 5 feet from the property line, so I cannot build something on top of that, because that area, as you know, it's corner lot, every year, I run into the issue that become a dumping ground for a neighbor, or somewhere else, they just dump, dump on my street, not they dump, they dump outside for the Santa Clara cleaning, annual cleaning, but because something that they dump illegally, they dump on my yard. So I have been doing that, cleaning this for years, and I'm so frustrated. So beside that, my house become a place because the wooden fence stop to the back of the house, and the front of the house is, I have the bedroom in front of the house, wide open, and that the corner lot, people tend to cross from one street to another street to shortcut it, and I run into the issue, the pedophile that happened to living near my neighbor and come and harass me, and I run into many time, and finally, the police one day saw him ring the bell, he ran the bell on my house, and I were careful, and I went to the backyard, and when I met the police, what, did you ring my bell? I say, no, that gentleman there, and I say, and he chased after him, because after he ran, when he saw the police at the corner lot, and he ran, and he chased after, and he put restraint order on that pedophile, and he told me what you did the right thing. So beside that incident, another incident is that the father and son, the contractor or something, I say, my son is working on your house, when your husband is here, so he lost, he may, he forgot, he put his key in your garage, you need to open the garage for we can get the key, and I said, no, we don't have anybody come here and do any work, so I cannot open the garage for you. And another incident, this is true story, I had all the police report, I called the police report, I had stuck with them, I come to police department and ask for the report, so I can be sent to the commission, thick like this. And another time, it's about, we came home after we went to San Francisco for firework, by the time we came home, we just closed the door and the bell ring, and my husband asked, what you need? That lady was very cold, she wears short and tank top, and I say, I need help, and I say, oh, really? Okay, could you please stay there? I will call the police, and as soon as he heard us that I called the police, she ran to the stop sign, and after a while, the police come and talked to her, and I find out that she was accompanied with another 2 black men coming pick her, because they want to remove her to the shelter, but she didn't want to go, so the police tell me lock the door. So I have been experiencing a lot of crazy thing happen to my house, looked like somebody tried to break in or something, and on top of that, my neighbor across the street from my, they left the house because one day, one drunk driver ran her car into their house, so they had a kid, so that's why they left, they sold the house left. In my house, and you can see from the Kylie side go to my house, it's almost direct to my house, and only curve a little bit at the Woodhams folks, it curved a little bit, so that the fear that I have, my house become a dumping ground, and the people tried to break in, harass me, and also the car accident, I can see. Car accident just recently, after I build a fence, I talked to Leslie about that, and I'm sure... So, for that reason, I have so many incident, I want to protect my family and my house, so that's why I decide to build a fence, and happened to see the fence suggest by neighbor, they build the same way, the wrought iron fence, and right at the border of my property, so I just imitate, I didn't know that you need to have permit to build the fence, and I just, they go ahead and build it, until they build, they build finish, and the city contact me and tell me I violate the law, and they say, oh, I have no idea, I see all my neighbor, I point, I take the video, I walk around, they not only iron fence, they have solid wall, not just, you know, the fence like, see-through fence like my house. So that's the reason I've been working closely with Leslie, and because my, I had, lately I had a lot of issue, a family death in my family, and also my husband lost job last year, and also, I had so much stress, so that's why I had a stroke, that's why I ran on almost a year. Right now, I just recover. All I need is that approval and understanding, because right now, we have no mean of even relocate. Another thing they did give me the permission to, to have 6 feet at the current right now, move to the wooden fence 6 feet, when say that the wooden fence only there, I cannot move 6 feet, because it's 5 feet right now, 5 feet not 6 feet, so there's, they, they came back and inspect, and they measure, they say, okay, they confirm 5 feet, the wooden fence from the property line, so if I build a fence that move back where I move to, it doesn't make sense, and on top of that, I had get approved from the neighbor, our fence become very beautiful built, and people love it, I walk around neighbor, I have, hear the book, Leslie?
All the people praise it.
So the neighbor very happy about it, and they praise very positively, so I got approved from all the neighbor, from 4 direction, because the corner I go left and right, and that the reason I build a fence after 24 years, and now, after I build and I got a violation, which I couldn't believe it. So even now, when I, I just, I had a stroke, and I was so, half of my body couldn't move because the stress, and then I had, couldn't afford insurance in hospital here, so I decided to go to my country, Vietnam, to recover, so I just got back. So I just got back last night because Leslie say, no, she cannot extend longer than that. So I flew in. Flew in because I tell Leslie, I have to present it so I can get a positive feedback and I got a sick approval from commission member and the city. Because I'm not exception in this case. So all I ask is, already built, it beautifully built. It not like some lousy job or something can take it out. Another thing that I cannot cut down to three feet because it had a spoke. And which is dangerous because the school, the both side of the street of Wood Forbes. The kids keep going there. They throw the trash. But if I cut down three feet, then too dangerous for the kid, you know, they play around sometime, you know, on three feet, too short. They will, you know, hurt themselves. So I cannot do that. So all I ask is that to remain the fence the way it is, like the few neighborhood that they have it. And if you don't believe me, you can come and look at how beautiful it built and everybody approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Biagini and Commissioner Wong.
Who built that wrought iron fence for you?
Because I did have a friend, they recommends the guy come and build.
Okay, so you had a company come to build?
Out of state. I think that might be handyman or something.
So they didn't? I, I, this would be the first time I've heard of a company not advising a person that they needed a permit.
Company, just somebody I know and then friend refer by somebody.
Friend of a friend?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry that you had a stroke. Let me just say that. Thank you for still being here, okay? But it's, a friend of a friend builds it and doesn't tell you that they're building it on city property is a big problem.
No, he did say to me, this is a property, my property up to where the walkway is.
Oh, he told you that whole area between the fence and the wrought iron fence? Between the wood fence and the wrought iron fence was still your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was wrong.
That the wooden fence, existing wooden fence is five feet from the, the walkway.
Oh, well. Okay, I'm sorry that you got bad advice, but anyway. This is really kind of a sad situation. I thank you for at least coming forward to us after so many extensions. So I thank you for being here in person.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. So, yeah, so when you build a fence, you, you, you don't know it's on city's property, right? And you didn't intend, and yeah.
To be honest, because, because the price and I didn't mention about it. It must be, this guy must want a job so badly. So that's why he can build. Matter of fact, after he built it, he still leave a lot of thing need to be welded proper, you know?
Okay.
So that's something I have to, to do next.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So again, like Commissioner Biagini said, I truly empathize and understand your actual hardship. I live near this neighborhood as well and I just want to acknowledge your problem is real. There is no doubt. There are, after 24 years, if you have come, there is a recognition that this is something that is above and beyond just a normal corner lot issue. There are several corner lots. What I think is your bigger challenge is for me, two things. One, city property. It's like you taking over somebody else. If, if your neighbor did that to your property, you would be here filing the same complaint and violation. This just happens to be the city property, so the city has all its legal responsibilities to make sure they preserve city property. The second, you have a bigger liability because the person who built the fence has not ensured its safety. A building permit is to ensure that there is structural bracing. When a harsh wind blows, it doesn't tip over. There's no security or safety issue. And in this case, if you're telling me the welding itself was not done properly and you have a six foot tall fence, that is actually a legal liability for you as an, as a property owner.
A few places I need to.
I know, but few places or not, we don't know, right? The, the problem that we are trying to share with you is there's a legal liability both for encroaching the property of the city and having a non-licensed professional build a structure that actually poses a life and safety issue. Three feet fence, even if it topples over, is not considered a life safety issue.
Yeah, they do. You know why? You cut down three feet, the school both side of the Forbes Street, a lot of student walk by there.
Yeah, but that is not a liability issue because they are crossing your property.
Not crossing. If they play and they hit each other and they fall into the fence, but the fence would have hook, you know, the spike. So it's not safe for them. So that the reason I pay 3,670, almost 700 dollars to be here today.
Understood. But I'm trying to explain that if every, I have a property that is relatively cornered. I have even homeless people in front of my yard right now as we speak. Corner lots, I've seen beautiful corner lots that have three feet. Wood fences, five feet are your legal boundary that are legal because they have been grandfathered in. If you have to replace, and I don't have city, if it's less than five feet, you could do it. What we are trying to share is in the perspective of the city, your issue is real, no doubt. Your police report is real, no doubt. See if you can move your prop, the fence to be inward such that you have the same level of security that you need. It just is within the right setback. You can do the same thing within 10 feet. You can still have six feet wrought iron fence. It just has to be moved 10 feet within.
Can you, wrought iron fence?
Yeah. Yeah. So that is your opportunity to correct what otherwise would pose a very significant challenge to approve today for us.
Thank you for your advice. This is one of my lesson I have to learn. However, it easy, it easy for you to say, just relocate something. Yeah, and really cut down something. It's easy. But my house is not exceptional, for one case. I see a lot of house, they have not only rife and fancy through fence, they have solid concrete. Or they had three, thick tree. They together, they really high. It doesn't know, limit is six feet.
You know?
Another thing that if you go down, you see a corner, I trim all the tree all the time. So no obstruction whatsoever. And it, you know, it protect the kid when they walk. If they hit each other, they against the fence, but they not fall on the fence.
You're talking about a three foot fence at that point, right? Or no?
Yeah.
Okay, so hold, don't think about the three foot fence at this moment.
Yeah.
You can put that aside for the moment, okay? But I don't want to step in. Do you have other questions?
No, I would just wanted to say that there are many people doing does not justify, that's what our legal attorney. It's like hundred people jump a red light. But that one red light that becomes an issue and gets caught is the one that gets a ticket and they are liable. They can't just say, oh, hundred people jumped it. So why aren't you allowing me to go without a violation?
You're right about that, but there is some time, some exceptional can be done. We can already build. And it's very beautiful and all the neighbor think that's a good idea. I don't want any more of the people dumb.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's hold on to this because I, I want to try and solve this. You can't have it the way it is as, as we see because first of all, you're on the city property, okay? But let's see what we can solve. Let's take one side at a time, okay? The side where there's dumping going on, the reason you put the fence there is so that they couldn't put it tentatively what you thought was your property up against the fence, correct? Okay. Since that fence is actually not on your property, you're unable to, to keep that fence there for the moment. That's, that's, we can discuss that, but we can't do that. You have, that fence part will have, would have to be taken off, okay? Now, let's look at that problem real quick. When people dump stuff on the street, whether it's during that wonderful time of year when we're cleaning everything up or at other times, and it, the dumping is on public property at that point. What can one do? Can one contact the city and saying, hey, somebody's dumped stuff and you need to come out and do something with it? Is that, would that be a correct statement? They put it on your property, but it's literally up against my fence, let's just say. Let's just take it hypothetical. Because if it's only, it's only happening that one time of the year, let's give you some ways to work with this. So somebody dumps a whole bunch of stuff, literally on the city property, which is butts right my fence and such. What options do I have to have the city take care of it?
If it's on city property?
Correct.
You can put in a complaint and we do have maintenance staff that can assist with that. If it's not on city property, that would be the property owner's responsibility.
Understood.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so for the moment, what I'm gonna say to you, and we can talk about this later too, but that one fence on the side is on city property. If they take that off, then you can go up to the wood fence, still city property. Am I correct with that, Leslie? Okay.
Yeah, a few feet.
So the thing is, you can always call the city and have them take care of it. So let's just hold on for that thought for the moment. The front, where the, the fence is now, is that also in the wrong space? Is that also on city property?
No, the front, they are outside of the, they're within their property line. It's, we're not sure what the exact setback is in the front. We weren't provided a site plan to determine that. So it's through.
Was there a wood fence in the front as well?
Not on the side.
They're, they're.
Only the side.
Let me share my screen.
So the front is just the wrought iron fence at this point and we're not sure if the setback is correct? Would that be the right statement? Okay.
Forty feet, more than 20 feet, I can guarantee with you.
I, I, I believe you, but I have to verify what they, what work that they actually did.
The green line here shows where the existing, oh, sorry.
We're not seeing it.
Sorry, the yellow.
Sorry.
Invisible green line?
It's not showing. There you go, okay. Another green line, the yellow line, sorry, shows where the existing wood fence is. So it is in the front, but it's consistent with the classic code where they're providing 35 feet or more.
I'm, I'm sorry, we, we can't hear what you're saying. I apologize.
The yellow line is where the wood fence is. It's hard to see in the graphic, but.
That's the, that's the side, correct?
That's the side and there's a little bit in the front right here.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then where's the wrought iron fence?
That's the green right here.
Okay. And you're not sure if that is within?
Or sorry, red, my bad. It's the red one.
Red line.
Yeah.
The red line is the?
Wrought iron.
That's why I was saying, because the green line is within, the green line is.
In compliance, correct.
Now, it says six foot fence in compliance with zone code. So the red on the front is also out of code?
That is what they have existing for the wrought iron fence.
Is the front wrought iron fence on their property or on our property?
In, no, that is within their property.
Just the wrong setback.
It might be the wrong setback. It's less than 20 feet.
So when you say might be, I gotta be very definitive. Are we positive or are we not positive?
We measured from just our measurements, but we don't have a two scale site plan that was provided to us. So based on our measurements, it's about two feet off.
Okay, so they literally could put it, if they put a two feet back with the?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, here's a picture.
The yellow wood is the legal grandfathered non-compliant fence that is okay.
Microphone?
Commissioner Chiraku, could you turn your microphone on, please?
The red is the newly built wrought iron fence that is above, both on the side as well. What they are trying to say is the green line, you could build up to three feet.
Right. But that, the green line is the six foot wooden fence.
Green line can be six.
No, the red is the six foot wrought iron fence.
I understand that. I'm saying the six foot, the green line is the six foot fence, the wooden one.
There's no, the wood is only yellow.
I see green on the front there.
Yeah, the green, the green just shows if they were to meet our zoning code, what it would look like.
Okay, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, so it is off, it's, but maybe on their property, but it's still off. Got it. Okay, okay.
And if we, if they built it now, right, if they wanted to keep it, they could do it on the green line at three feet.
Okay.
They could go red, 10 feet in, and they could build it six feet.
Okay, so.
Chair.
Got it, got it.
Chair, green line is, and Commissioner Chiraku, the green line can be six feet because it's 20 feet setback from the property line.
Just a few feet.
Between that 20 feet and the property line, it could only be three feet. So if they built it at that green line, it could be six feet. And they're a couple feet off currently with their red, red line fence there.
Oh, come on.
Yes, correct.
Well, hold on, I'm not finished here.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm trying to get this set up here. So let's just, forgetting the side fence for the moment, right? The front fence, we know it's out of compliance. We, right? So if we would, but still on their property.
Yeah.
If we were just talking about that, would we be able to do a variance? I mean, is that a common thing that one could do and is that something that we would be able to?
Well, keep in mind, you have to make the findings for a variance such that there's something unique about the property.
And life safety is not?
Well, let's just, hold on, let's just say, okay, I agree with you. We have to find some reason for saying that. Got it. Understood. But since it's on their property, this is, this would be a much easier thing to deal with versus what's on the side. Like you're on our property, you're, you're outside of what you need to be. Can't do that.
Yeah, the portion, to the extent any portion of it is on their private property, it's an easier decision to make.
Okay.
Because they won't need an encroachment permit. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay, so now I, I want to make sure I, I'm explaining to this to you what's going on. You do a better job explaining.
Can I, can I make a comment before we go proceed?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I want to, I gotta, as long as it's not gonna take off tangent.
No, it's gonna probably clarify some things. The driveway is approximately over 20 feet, correct? Their driveway is. This is a long, is a longer driveway than actually?
They're required to provide a 20 foot driveway from the property line. I'm not sure if it is.
I have a picture right here, that the fence, the front fence comes right behind the end line of the, of their driveway, right with the front of their house. So actually, from this sidewalk to where their iron fence is, is 20 feet or could be 21 feet off the side of the street. So by what you were saying, if I'm not mistaken, is that could be six feet tall.
From the front, from the front setback.
20 feet.
20 feet.
Yep.
It could be six feet.
So their fence in the front, by this, could be six feet tall and that's the way they have it. Now, the problem that we're having, that Chair Eric here was saying is the side, just move the side back to go alongside with the wooden fences. You're already allowing.
The wooden fence is on the property line, so they would need to.
You're already allowing.
You couldn't put the wrought iron fence in there, otherwise you're still sitting on city property because you're really cutting a thin line.
Right, but they're already allowing the wooden fence to be sitting on the city property, that's what I'm saying.
The wooden fence is legal on conforming. Yeah.
Okay, so why can't you just match the wooden, the iron, wrought iron fence alongside, you know, coming out right out of the post out of the wooden fence?
Anything that go past that wooden fence is our property.
No, not in the street. It's, no, no, you know what I'm saying. No, you guys, you guys are not looking at it.
Look at this, though.
Yeah.
That, here's where the line is.
They, they would need to, if they're proposing a new fence.
That's what I'm saying. This part here, no, it is from the front of the house. Okay? Yeah.
Okay, well, hold, hold on here because we have a whole different.
Yeah.
Here, here's what I'm trying to propose. We, we can't give you exactly what you want, okay? Because on the side, it's on our property, way too far on our property.
Yeah.
Okay?
Definitely.
Now, from what you have told me, the problem you have with that side is when we have the trash pickup, people put stuff on there. The only solution I can offer you is then you tell the city, hey, somebody dumped all this on here and you need to come pick it up, okay?
Matter of fact, I did. When they clean out all the trash, they say, hey, you cannot put on, on my yard.
No, no, you, if somebody does put it, I don't want you getting into a fight with anybody. If somebody happens to put it there, it's actually city property, which means.
But they move, they move from the trash, they put on my property.
I understand that.
And they say that is my property.
No, no, hold on, wait, wait. That side property?
Yeah.
Your property ends at that wooden fence. Anything from the wooden fence towards the street is city property. Am I got that right?
Yeah, but the point is that the people that collect the trash, they say that's your property, you take care, and this one illegal.
Okay, I tell you, I tell you, I tell you what, look, I'll, I make you, I make you this promise, if this year winds up that they dump it on there, on the side, you take pictures, you go to the city, file the complaint, and if the city says, we're not cleaning it up, you come back to the planning commission and you tell them what happened, okay?
About twenty-four years, I have.
I, I understand that, but we, we gotta work something out here, because we can't have that there. That's.
My house is not exceptional, one, because a lot of house have that, too.
Well, right.
Especially in San Jose, much more than that. Santa Clara, most street, but San Jose, you can see barely everywhere.
I, I, I can't say anything about Santa Clara, other houses, and I can't say anything about San Jose. I can only talk right now about what yours is and what our staff has given us. And I want to try and solve something for you, because to me, the trash is a minor problem compared to all the stories and things that you've told us about people coming in and trying to do evil at your house. That's the, I want to make sure you're safe. The trash isn't gonna hurt your safety, but people coming into your property for stupid crazy reasons are. So, I want to work with you in saying that, okay, the fence on the side has to be removed. The fence on the front technically is not the correct setback, but we can work with you to see if we can do something to fix that and allow you to keep that, okay? I can't make promises, like, we haven't finished this, but this is one thing that I'm proposing, because I, I promise you, the side, we have, you can't put something on city property.
Well, they did give me on September of last year, I had in my email, they allow putting six foot, but I say, no, six foot, it go beyond the wooden fence. So, they went out, they measured, they thought that were ten foot, but no, just only five foot from the.
Who is this, the, the person that did the construction?
Give me, oh, my phone.
Oh, the city?
I have my phone.
The city told you this?
Yeah, they will send me a letter.
Who in the city told you this, do you know? I'm sorry. Sure, sure. Give it, if you give it to Elizabeth, please. You could summarize it for us, Elizabeth, if that would be okay.
That's gonna be a little difficult to do. It's an email from Leslie.
Okay, then Les, Leslie.
What did you say, Leslie? We're all.
Let's find out.
Lauren Hardy.
Okay, so this is in response to the, the code complaint and providing her the options for what she can do in order to come into compliance. And so what I said is she could remove the wrought iron fence and relocate it to within the allowed setbacks at five feet, five inches from the side property line and twenty feet from the front property line, at a six-foot height. Reduce the height to three feet or apply for a variance.
That's what she's done.
She applied for the variance, correct.
And here we are deliberating how legitimate the variance application would, if we approved it, would the encroachment permit?
Well, the wrought iron fence on the side is on the, our property, right?
It currently is on the property line.
So, moving it, and I did tell her five feet, five inches.
Three foot inch.
No. And I think we have new information about exactly where the property line is, or is that right? Five feet would give us the ten feet, right? Yeah, five feet would give us the ten feet, but that's why I said five feet, five inches. Yeah. So, she has a little, she has a little space to, to move it closer to.
Five feet.
If, if she moves it five feet, five inches towards, almost on that wood fence, yes, she could do that. Six feet, she can have, yes.
Six-foot wrought iron.
All right.
Right, which is, which is.
They would still need a variance for that, because that would be on the property line. They would need to move five feet inside of the property line in order to do it without a variance. Yeah, or in five inches.
We're talking two, two different sides, and there are two different laws or regulations that apply.
Let me, sorry, this might help again. So, this is where the fence, the, the red shows where the wrought iron fence is. If you approve the variance as it is for this red line, they would need a public encroachment permit from Public Works. If they relocate it to where the yellow, where the current existing wood fences, they could do it as six foot, but they would still need a variance, because only a three-foot fence is allowed, based on our zoning code right now. If they do not want to go through a variance process, the green line shows where they can locate it without any planning permits.
The purpose of that fence where it is today is to keep people from dumping, correct? So, if I move the wrought iron all the way up to the wooden fence, it doesn't serve a purpose anymore, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and that's where they would, even if we moved it up to the wood fence, you were saying there would still be a variance that would be needed?
Encroachment.
Encroachment, okay. So, two fences in the same place doesn't make sense to me, right? The wood fence is fine, no problem, everything's good, right? So, here's the thing, you, you have to move that fence, but the only choice you have would be literally to move the wrought iron right up against the wood. And that doesn't, I don't think, serve your purpose, is that correct? Okay, so, that one, that side is mainly to me, because you don't want dumping on there. Am I correct? Okay. The one that to me sounds like the most important to you is your safety and the one in the front of your house. Am I correct in that assumption?
Well, the front and side have to be working together. You cannot have the front but not the side, because they can enter that way, too.
Well, okay, we can, there's ways to fix that for the moment, but the front is primarily to make sure people don't get in, right?
Yeah.
So, she's trying to say, the yellow doesn't work right now. I need an extension, because people are still able to come to the front door.
Right, they want the green?
She wants the green.
Yeah.
She should be doing.
If we, if we did the green, is that still within the property line?
That is meeting our setback requirements, no permit, planning permits required.
I'm sorry, two people are talking.
Sorry. The green, if they relocate the fence where the green line is, no planning permit is required. They could do a wrought iron fence at six foot.
Okay, and the red line is where it currently is now?
Yes.
And that, that's still on their property, though, right?
On the corner side on Forbes, it is not. On the front, on Woodhams.
Okay.
It is.
So, what they would need to do is, okay, let's just say, they would need to do it with the green line, it would need to be moved, that would also then totally enclose it, correct?
Yeah, right now, based on Google Images, it does look like the fence is a little outside of where the garage line is, but again, up to, that's why we think it doesn't meet the twenty-foot requirement. But if they were to make it in line at twenty feet, no planning permit is required.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, you were saying something, so?
No, I was saying they would still, if they were to keep the front.
Commissioner, microphone.
Still need a variance.
Correct.
They could get the variance for the two-foot.
Correct.
Extension, so, that's, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay, okay, so, we, we can't give you exactly what you want, which is, leave it as it is. That can't happen. But we want to work with you to see what we can do to make it better for you, so that still you have your safety, you're gonna have to accept that trash is gonna be put on the side potentially, happens once a year, and that it's the city's responsibility that any, any trash on their property, they have to clean up. Am I correct? Yeah, okay. I know I'm asking you for the fifth time, but I want to see if you're awake.
I refuse, I have been there for twenty-five years almost, and every year, I tell the supervisor, even, I cannot talk to worker that move the trash.
Yeah.
I talk to supervisor. I say, this is not my truck, they say, along your line of your property, we're not touching. They move, they keep doing that.
Can we give them a letter saying that this is the city property?
Nobody say that.
Right? We could, we could acknowledge that this, as part of this whole process, saying, hey, you're on city property, this side is city property, we could acknowledge that, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you could have, hey, here's a letter saying that this is your property, you fix it, and we have to fix it, that's our, our thing. I, I know what's going on, but if we, if we do it.
To move, because everything encased in the concrete, my husband, he lost the job, he the only red winner. So.
I understand.
We right now, with him, I've been a year, I don't know how long I'm going to.
Yeah, I, I understand, now here's the thing.
So, you see how beauty, the weight, angle like that, you move like that, it look really odd, and you can see yourself.
I, I will say this, if you want to keep it as is, and you want to go through that process, that's gonna be a very hard process. So, if you're asking us to say.
Not that my house is not one of the kind, because a lot of neighbor had the same, but he had the, you know, the two, the block, the field, everything.
We have to look at that on a one-by-one basis, and if it comes before us, then we'll look at it.
That's why I said to make one exception this time.
Okay, so.
I didn't ask for more, I just asked.
Understand, okay.
I didn't know. If I knew, Leslie, please forgive me and weigh me for this time, because financially, we cannot relocate, because encased in the, the concrete, taking hours costs as much.
I, I understand, unfortunately, this is not something that.
And also, because of that, I pay for variance, I pay for.
We have to work within the process that we have, so.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars almost, to be here.
Okay, I understand that that's the case. Right now, anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question, but I have, I do have comments. Yeah, I think, I think.
Comments are after, but if you have a question for the applicant, that's fine.
Yeah, sure.
You want to save it for afterwards?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're, we're going to go to public comments, or?
Public comments now.
So, okay, please, go ahead and sit down, and we're gonna go to public comments.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course. And don't forget your, your thing up there. Yeah.
We do not have any hands raised online and no one in the council chambers to speak.
Oh. Then motion to close, yep.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Go ahead and record your vote, please, to close public comment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, may I have some comments?
Please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Actually, I think I'm here, I just serve the, our city, serve our community, serve our citizens. I hear a lot, Chair, you talked a lot, but my feeling is, I, I, I visit the side, yeah, I, I think the fence, it's built beautifully. I, I think it's a plus for our city, it's not a minus. It's a good thing for the city, for the community. And I, I, I see some, some document, the neighbors support the, the fence. I, I, I also saw probably just one person, object, I don't know, I don't know the identity, but when I look at the, the letter, I think probably that's just for one person. So, yeah, I mean, we can, we can request the owner to, to, to remove it or relocate it, but for what? I, I think, I, yeah, I mean, actually, I also, I visited that side, I look at the fence, it's six-foot tall, I agree with the owner, it's, it's safer. Right, I mean, next to it, it's a three-feet fence. I mean, I, I took a picture, yeah, on the top, on the fence, they purposely put a small ball there, tried to prevent people, you know, fail on the fence. So, for what? You know, I, I think we have a code, right, we need to follow, but I think, I think our code, the purpose is to serve our city, serve our citizens. A few months ago, we, we did the AT&T thing, right? So, because of the code, I, I think the best location for the AT&T antenna, it's in the, yeah, our park, but, but we cannot. So, yeah, I mean, code is code, but we are human beings, so that's why we have this Me, I fully supported the owner to keep the fence, so let, let, let the commission make the decision, right? They, they need to move or not. So, yeah, that's my comments, thank you.
Yeah. This is difficult, because I understand your concerns that are being exacerbated by your health. I, I completely understand that. The problem is, at least on the side, you're on city property. If, if like Commissioner Priya said, if you had been on a neighbor's property instead of city property, it doesn't matter how many good reasons you have, there's gonna be legal problems. We cannot just say it's okay without a variance, and even if we did, the odds of the Public Works Department saying, okay, we'll give a variance, are very, very slim, because it's not the only corner house that has issues with vagrancy. Safety to me is number one, but at the end of the day, I almost wonder if you have a legal issue with whoever built that fence for doing it without getting the proper permits. You may have a cause of action against that person, so that it helps alleviate the cost to move it along the green lines. They should, anybody who can build a nice fence like that, or at least it looks like a nice fence, I don't know, but anybody who can build a fence like that has to know. I don't care if they're from out of state, they have to know there's permits, and if they didn't tell you, I think you have a cause of action against them, that's my opinion. But as hard as this is to say, and I think it's kind of also what Commissioner Priya said, if a hundred people run a red light, that, and only one person gets the ticket, that's like if you go the freeway and you're driving eighty miles an hour, and the police pulls you over, and you say, well, you can't give me a ticket, because look at all those other cars that are going fast. Either you can or you can't, and if others are out of code, they could be subject to the same problem you're facing right now. So, I, I'm, I very much appreciate Commissioner Crutchlow for trying to come up with a situation that works for you. He's trying very hard. There's just no question in my mind that that side yard, you just can't keep that iron fence there. As far as the front, if it's also out of, if you're gonna move the side one, there's a part of me that says, just move the front one to the green line as well, and then we no longer have a problem, you're safe, and you're within legal parameters. So, that's, that's sad as it is, I, I can't, I, I can't support a variance, even though I wish I could, I can't. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I echo everything Commissioner Biagini said, and I know the neighborhood, and I know the issues of vagrants, and I know I have people knocking on my door all the time. Trust me, I wish I could do something about just more protection for our city residents through our policing force. That said, every code can go out the door. We don't need codes. If everybody had, everybody has a story, and everyone will have a justification. The reason there are codes, laws, is to ensure some level of standard parity or, you know, evenness across a city, across a community. Just because other cities are not implementing their code enforcement, or we are, we have a problem here that is visible, we have an unfortunate situation, but we see light for you at the end of the tunnel. I was even ready to go with Doc, with Chair Crutchlow's recommendation to see if we can give the variance for the front setback, but the side is, is just not legally. But the side is, is just not legally plausible for me to think like, I could do that tomorrow, can I, on your property? That's where it is, so I am with Commissioner Biagini.
I have another idea, if I may, listen, here, I really, really want to help you, okay, you can sit down, it's okay, because in coming up with ideas like this, I can understand that it can be very difficult to understand here at the last minute and try and negotiate something that makes sense, because it, you're, everybody's under stress, and we're trying to come up with things literally at the last minute. I want to help you, I really, really do, and I think that we, we can't leave it as it is, for sure, but we can help you do something better than just say, take the fence down, okay? And what I would ask is, would it be possible with staff looking at this alternative, and honestly, I don't know if you already looked at it, but could you work with the residents in looking at what is possible, and helping them understand that here's the alternative, but like, the, like we said, the side fence can't stay. You know, we can do the best we can to help you, I want help from a protection standpoint, because that seems to be the, the big complaints you have, but I don't want you to feel like you're pressured right now to have to accept it, and what I would like to do, what would be the way to, if we want to say, look, we want to like continue this, or something like that, where they would have a chance to talk to staff, work it out before we, we vote on anything, is that a possibility?
In writing.
Well, certainly, rather than voting to deny, you can vote to continue with the direction to refer it back to staff to work with the applicant to come up with a redesign. That's certainly an option.
Okay, so what, what I'm going to do is along that, so I'm not going to make the motion just a second, obviously, but I'm going to give you some time. Now, the thing is, I, I know you've had problems and such, and we had to do continuances. If we do this continuance, though, um, you have to do it within the time that we give you, okay? So if you're saying that, you know, I need sixty days, fine, but we, we have to make a commitment that we get it done, whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after that, we need to have a commitment to get it done, but this will give you time to go over with staff what options you have. The way it is today, it can't stay that way. But rather than try and pressure you into now figuring it out, I want to give you some time. Would, would that be acceptable for you to talk to staff, would you be okay with something like that?
Thank you for all the time you've given me. But now, wait for sixty day, or one week or two week, it doesn't change anything. What I've been thinking is that, because they have been built, and the money have been spent, so to be able to find a contractor to take it out and relocate, you know how much it will cost.
Okay, don't worry, don't worry about that part just for the moment, we can give you an option.
Financially.
And the timing for getting it actually done is two different things. It would be time to sit and talk and see what your options are.
I have been working with Leslie, about couple, three meetings, right, Leslie? And have been emailed back and forth, almost a year now, year, more than a year.
Okay.
So I've been working with Leslie.
So you don't want the time?
No, I don't see the point of doing that, but I just want to keep the way it is. As Mr. Han said, what is the meaning of doing that, it don't get, don't, you know, achieve what you try to do.
Okay.
That's why I paid almost thirty seven hundred dollars to get the variant, and wanted to take that risk.
Understood.
To get approved home, planning mission.
Understood, we understand what you want. Okay, thank you, you can sit down, thank you.
I, I can make a quick.
What?
Make a comment. Okay.
Uzah?
Yes, I got it, she said she paid twenty seven hundred dollars for the variant?
Thirty seven.
Thirty seven hundred, okay, okay, hold on a second here. I'm looking at the pictures of here that we have of her house, she has a beautiful cobblestone driveway that it looks like she just put in, along with the beautiful stonework in the house, with a beautiful entrance gate, separate from the entrance of the house, that is attached to that gate. Now, seeing to, to, kind of, to go with the, what you were requesting, what the city was requesting, you probably just to move that fence, since it's already built, all you had to do is cut and put new foundations on it, it wouldn't have cost over three thousand dollars to do just that, we're not asking you to build a whole new structure or put a new driveway, we're just asking you to move that, and there's no way, I had new fence put in, a few years ago, it didn't cost that much to do that, just to move that along, with the money that she paid to do that, and it will still keep people from coming into her house, like we agreed, is move it in closer to the, to the wood fence, and keep the, the front like it is, it would make it look very nice, and still be safe for her, it would, but.
Fence would have to go, the wood, wrought iron fence would have to go all the way up against the wood fence.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, or even bring it almost to the house, and it will still keep people away from, from her property, and that's what the main interest is, forget about the garbage right now, the garbage could be called to the city, everybody, you know, in us a corner house, probably people do walk around and throw stuff there, you know, but that's something that, but the main concern is the safety of the property and the occupants, and spending all that money just to keep that fence out there, when it was, it's going to be run on city property, doesn't make any sense, I would have just gotten that money, and put my fence, and get the whole thing over with, and the property looks very nice, they did a beautiful job in their driveway, a beautiful job in their entrance gate, so, I mean, I would be really, really, really pleased, there's no reason that she couldn't have done that, and that's the way that I see.
And I'm sure that's what they advised, she just didn't want to take that.
She just doesn't want to do it, and we're trying to meet her halfway with this, and you have to give a little bit, we want to work with you, we're going to give, and we don't want to hear any more stories of this and that, I feel for you, I'm sorry, but we're doing the best we can, and there's the laws we have to follow, and that's one of the laws we're doing, so let's, I would say, so let's make a motion on this, and move on.
So, fine, oh, hold on, finally.
Nothing that hasn't been said, so I'm not.
Okay, just, just checking, okay, a motion?
We try. I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution denying the variance to locate a six-foot wrought iron fence within the required ten-foot street side setback and a twenty-foot front setback proposed to 572 Woodhams Road, subject to findings.
Second. The motion was made by Commissioner Biagini, seconded by Commissioner Cherekuru.
Yes.
To approve staff recommendation, go ahead and cast your vote. Commissioner Uzah?
He doesn't have the.
Yeah, I know, I needed to get his vote, thank you, okay. Motion passed.
They can appeal this decision to City Council within seven days.
Okay. Calendar days?
Correct, there's a seven-day period to appeal this decision to the City Council.
Okay, do you, do you understand that? Within seven calendar, within seven days, you're going to appeal it, you can make a motion to appeal to the City Council. Okay, so, sorry. Yeah.
Staff, if you're ready to help them on the process.
We'll send her an email.
Staff will help you with that.
We'll send an email, or, yeah, uh, for the appeal process, yeah.
You may have a better luck there as well, City Council, you can still make your same case that you told them here, and see if they have a little more discretionary review to, to give you what you're asking. Okay?
Thank you. All right, item five, action on conditional use permit, PL 2400424, to construct a single-sided digital LED billboard as part of a billboard relocation agreement and a minor modification to reduce the required fifteen hundred linear feet distance from another electronic or digital display message sign, and recommendation to the City Council to approve adoption of the billboard relocation agreement located at seventeen hundred Dwayne Avenue, continued from June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Planning Commission meeting. Thank you. Yeah. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. This is the presentation for seventeen hundred Dwayne Avenue, the request is for a conditional use permit for a new electronic digital display message sign, per zoning code section eighteen point forty-two point one four zero C. A minor modification to reduce the required fifteen hundred linear feet distance from another electronic digital display message sign by up to twenty-five percent, per zoning code chapter eighteen point one twenty-four, and recommendation to the City Council to approve adoption of the billboard relocation agreement, per zoning code section eighteen point forty-two point zero nine zero C. This item was continued, um, from the April sixteenth Planning Commission meeting by the Commission to Research Safety and Traffic Studies, a publicly noticed Planning Commission hearing was scheduled for June eleventh, where staff requested a continuance of this item to August thirteenth meeting for some additional time to complete the request. The existing site is point sixty-six acres, and has the general plan designation of low intensity office research and development, and L O R D zoning, the surrounding use to the north is US one oh one, to the south, east, and west, the existing uses are also L O R D. This is the proposed site plan, the billboard is located within an existing paved area near the northern boundary of the subject property, the site has an existing business office for Coca Home, there's an existing on-premise sign with two-face advertising the Coca Home business located, which will remain on-site. This is the proposed rendering of the billboard, as seen from the southbound US one oh one, the proposed sign is a single-sided, west-facing LED digital billboard, visible to vehicles traveling southbound on Highway one oh one, um, the proposed billboard area is six, six hundred seventy-two square feet, and sixty feet in overall height, and the billboard face is mounted on a forty-six foot tall supporting column. The proposed sign will cycle through static images every eight seconds without video, motion, noise, and audio, the brightness levels are consistent with the city code at max five thousand nits during daytime and three hundred nits during nighttime, the project also proposes a, proposes a dimmer control to adjust the brightness according to the ambient conditions. Uses for the signs will include off-site advertisements promoting community events, public awareness campaigns, and broadcasting emergency messages when necessary. A conditional use permit is required per city code section eighteen point forty-two point one forty C, the proposed electronic digital display sign meets the development standards in section eighteen point forty-two, one forty F, um, please note that the height, as authorized by the code, is set by the conditional use permit, and they're proposing sixty feet, which is appropriate for a sign adjoining a freeway, and a minor modification is requested to reduce the separation requirement from another electronic digital display sign to one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven feet, where fifteen hundred linear feet is required by the code. The proposed sign complies with the, all the applicable operational standards in subsection G and federal and state laws. The city has had a, um, a policy since nineteen seventy-eight with ordinance thirteen sixty-five to limit the number of billboards to improve the quality of life for its citizens, the city's general policy is to reduce the overall number of billboards by encouraging the removal of existing billboards, um, a billboard relocation agreement is the instrument that allows citing a new billboard in exchange for the removal of existing billboards. They are proposed, the city can enter into the agreement, um, to allow for relocation of the existing outdoor displays at a three-to-one ratio, so they'll need to remove three billboard faces, to propose one new, with the removal of the three billboard faces, the number of billboards is not increased from seventeen billboards, um, one of the billboards that they're proposing to remove is on the west side of twenty-nine eighty-three El Camino Rio, and two billboard faces are proposed to be removed at thirty-three sixty-two El Camino Rio, you can see that on the graphics to the right. As mentioned before, this item was continued from April sixteenth meeting, where staff was advised to, um, research for traffic and vehicle safety, um, related to message hole sign, frequency of billboard, electronic message signs, and illumination. The, um, studies researching message hole time found that glances towards digital signs are occasionally longer than static signs, but consistently remained under two seconds, studies also observed that increased attention to the digital signs did not establish a causal link between message frequency and vehicle crashes. The frequency of billboard signs, um, in terms of the proposed billboard, is consistent with the California Business and Professions Code, specifically section fifty-four oh five, that requires a minimum thousand feet distance between message display signs on the same side of the highway, um, in order to create a ten point forty-nine second interval between two signs, um, when traveling at sixty-five miles per hour, the proposed billboard is approximately one thousand one hundred eighty-seven feet, and one thousand four hundred and forty feet from existing LED signs. Available, research did not measure a statistically significant relationship between billboard brightness and driver distraction, um, in order to better understand how brightness and illumination impacts the driver visibility, um, it's necessary to understand how static billboards are illuminated compared to digital displays, as seen on the graphic on the right, a static billboard faces are blasted with light at a level ranging from thirty-one to three hundred and twenty, twenty-one times the brightness of an LED bulb, and light reflects off the sign vinyl surface in all different directions, LED billboards, on the other hand, are, the illumination is focused and directed at a specific target audience, and receptors in the periphery are affected at a lesser level. The applicant hired Abrams Associate, a traffic engineering firm, to summarize accident history along US Highway one oh one in Santa Clara before and after digital billboard installation, the results were largely inconclusive, however, no causal link between digital billboards and accident rate where I, was identified. Furthermore, studies found that many variables contribute to a decrease or increase in accidents, accidents are often multi-causal events which are difficult to measure. On April, Monday, April fourteenth, the Planning Division received comments from the San Jose Airport Planning and Development Department, these comments have been forwarded to the applicant, and will be added as a condition, as conditions of approval for the project, um, the applicant has also received preliminary approval from Caltrans, which was attached to the staff report. The project is found to be categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section fifteen three oh three, Class Three New Construction, or Conversion of Small Constructions. Staff recommends that Planning Commission determines the project to be categorically exempt from CEQA, adopts a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a single-sided digital LED billboard as part of the billboard agreement located at seventeen hundred Dwayne, subject to findings and conditions of approval, adopt a resolution approving a minor modification to reduce the required fifteen hundred linear feet, and recommend to City Council, um, the approval of the billboard relocation agreement. Thank you.
Okay, I could ask a little more.
Sorry, are you finished with your?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, City Attorney, I have a question for you, I have a family member that owns billboard signs, can I reclusive myself from participating in that, or can I still vote on this?
Uh, you have a family member that owns.
You have a family member that owns one or more billboards. Is it your spouse?
It's on my spouse's side of the family.
But it is not your spouse.
It's my spouse, but it's not my spouse, no.
Okay. Your spouse's financial interests are attributed to you.
Right.
Extended family is not.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clear.
So, in that case, I don't believe, and then we'd, even if it was your spouse, we'd have to ask, how much would their financial interests be affected by this decision? It would be, you know, an indirect interest, and we'd have to pick it apart, but I think you're okay because it's not your spouse or your interest.
All right, any other questions for staff? No? No? Okay, I was curious about one thing, that one statistic about every 1,000 feet, 65 miles an hour, 10.49 seconds?
I'll have the applicant look into that more, but that's from the California Business and Professions Code section.
Interesting, how they got 10.49 seconds, but, okay. It just seemed, a little pathetic to me, but I was just wondering, you know, hey, by the way, how many people actually drive at 65 miles an hour? But I'm not, this is not a question, I'm being rhetorical. Don't even go there with me. All right, no more questions? Now, since this was something that was continued, we do allow the applicant to?
Oh, yes. It's a full public hearing, again.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for keeping us on Cameron Hall without front the applicant, and Steve Abrams is here, Abrams Associate.
Do we have the timer up?
I appreciate your time and consideration. I'll try not to take a whole 10 minutes here. I really appreciate you hearing us this evening, and I want to tell you that I, as a traffic engineer, I've been studying accident records for over 30 years, but what we normally study are intersections and freeway ramps, and we use this data to identify safety problems, whether there's a pattern of accidents, that we can use the data to help cities solve and/or help, you know, new developments solve. What we ran into a problem here, next slide, by the way, is that basically when you're dealing with before-and-after studies, it's a whole different animal, and I'll explain why it really makes it difficult. Typically, when we're doing accident data, we have five years of data before and after is what we're required, or before to, for any intersection that we study, so it's kind of a standard that most agencies use. We analyzed it for 1,000 feet in each direction from the sign, because even though you can see them from further, it's about 1,000 feet where you can actually, sorry, it's about 1,000 feet where you can actually read the text and see the images. The control segments, we actually had equal-sized segments on each side of the segment that we're analyzing for the billboard to see what happened there and compare so that you could better understand, you know, the effects that occurred here. Next slide. One of the problems here, we were supposed to analyze all three billboards in Santa Clara. Unfortunately, it's just not possible because, for example, one billboard was installed in 2011, and the data that we have really only goes back to about 2010, so you just couldn't get five years of before data for it. Next slide, please. We had a similar problem with another one where it was in 2022, and, you know, the latest full data year is 2024, so we weren't able to do a sufficient post-analysis of that. So really, it left us with one location that is kind of right in the sweet spot, put in around 2015 where we can analyze before and after. So unfortunately, that was what we ended up with. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the digital billboard at 941 Laurelwood. Next slide, please. Basically, the two control segments I mentioned were also analyzed, but in the segment where on either side of the billboard, because it faces both directions, by the way, so that's why we analyzed 1,000 feet in each direction. Basically, there was a decrease in accidents, rather substantial, after the billboard was installed, and I can help explain that a little later. Both of the control segments had an increase. In fact, one of them, the accidents nearly doubled in the after period from the before period, which really, you know, it kind of throws a wrench into, you know, making some conclusions here. Next segment, next slide, please. The installation at Laurelwood doesn't even exceed the random fluctuation in yearly accidents that occurs on these segments that we looked at over the period. In general, there's so many factors that, you know, that affect the accidents that I'll explain in a moment. You just can't make solid conclusions from the accident data. Next slide, please. Ultimately, the CHP data, it just can't be used to make statistically reliable conclusions, and I'll explain why. Next slide. First, it's, as I mentioned, there's the random nature of accidents, just there can be a 15% change on any segment in any given year. The biggest problem we had with this is that freeway accidents are not reported like streets. At intersections, we have a distance and a number of feet. With the accident locations, they're all reported by different things. Some of them are by milepost, others are by streets, and basically, a lot of them are reported only to the nearest tenth of a mile, so you don't know, you only know within about 500 feet of where this accident happened, so tough to say for sure it's in the control segment or not. Next slide, please. There are serious problems with, all we've worked with for years with the CHP database where there's just entry, data entry problems so that, you know, court might be spelled out, or it's abbreviated here, and street names are misspelled, and so we've learned and developed software over the years to kind of filter and gather as many accidents as we can, so we're pretty good at that, but it still doesn't mean we get all of them because there are problems with the entry, data entry. Changes in police enforcement have a serious effect on the accident rate, and you'd be amazed how it changed during the pandemic. Shortly after the pandemic, police were told to minimize contact with the public, and we've got data I can also show you about how it basically plummeted, the number of accidents, by about 20 to 30%, you know, consistently during the pandemic, from 2019 to 2020, the accidents just plummeted. Cell phone use has also increased the accidents. We basically have data that shows around 2015, it really started cellphone use, about 10 years ago, really started causing problems, handheld cellphone use, and the accidents rates went up about 20% kind of during that period and stayed that way until the pandemic. Freeway construction is a problem. It's not always logged correctly. We eliminated all DUI accidents and construction accidents, but they still can be sometimes not reported as when they're caused by construction. Next slide, please. There are some other technical studies that have been presented, and we reviewed those. Next slide. Unfortunately, you know, the studies, they don't surprise me, you know, because they're dealing with the same problems that we are, and in fact, they acknowledge that. In the studies, they say, you know, it's, the location of the accidents is imprecise. The, basically, a lot of the accidents, they can't say for sure if they're caused by that. They included accidents with fixed objects, for example, which maybe wouldn't be caused by, just on that subject, about on freeways like this segment, about 70% of the accidents are rear-end accidents, and then there's side swipe accidents, and then there's basically a smaller portion of people hitting fixed objects and going off the road. But basically, the results don't support the conclusions, not surprising to me. Seven out of the 10 locations they studied, the crash rate went down, but, and they were able to say that somehow that this hints at a conclusion, that they've interpreted the data that it hints at, you know, increased accidents near billboards, but it's very questionable. Next slide. The Alabama study was very similar. Half of them didn't support the conclusions. Next slide, please. This just gives you some idea, this is out of the Alabama study, that, you know, the difference is easily 15% per year, just kind of varying, so it really, that difference alone would kind of, you know, make their study kind of questionable, the data that they had. Next slide, please. The last study was really also a rather unusual one that really only compared digital billboards to regular traffic signs, where theoretically you should compare them to other billboards, is what I would assume, and so, and it was only based on surveys of only 41 drivers using this rather interesting, you know, simulation, and they had to conclude also that, you know, whether or not digital billboards are a traffic safety hazard cannot be answered conclusively based on the present data. But what I would maintain is that, you know, all these studies are trying to, you know, disprove the evidence that's already out there that hasn't been able to prove that, you know, there's any increase in accidents with digital billboards when compared to regular billboards. So although the accident data is inconclusive, I would say there is evidence that there is no significant increase in accidents due to digital billboards because they've produced numerous studies and they've been unable to prove it, you know, or disprove the other studies by the FHWA, which essentially say there is no significant problem, and that basically, the amount of time someone looks at it, it's very, almost the same as what you're looking at, the time you'd spend looking at a normal, normal billboard. So basically, we don't see any evidence that there's an increase based on the data between digital billboards and regular billboards. I appreciate your time.
Did you have any else you want to say? I don't want to cut you off here.
No, I wish I could have done that quicker. Thank you.
Well, no, you did it perfectly then.
All right.
That's fine. Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
No, just a thought, and first off, thank you to the applicant for investing in a study that's very novel. I found it absolutely fascinating, only because it just proved that there was no conclusive data, if at all, but I am coming to recognize that more accidents are happening just with still use of handheld devices, and that is just the way life is right now, and I just wanted to thank you. But I wanted to challenge that, we're in Santa Clara, Alabama, who drives anything? So you need to compare benchmarks that are like at least closer to San Francisco, maybe the billboards are, if at all, along 101, LA maybe, something that's high-density traffic, peak-hour traffic, that have billboards that are jazzy and, you know, even a Las Vegas study would have done.
I would say that when I made my comments last time, I was talking about Texas, Alabama, Sweden, so.
Yeah.
I think they did a very good job of trying to, so, yeah, I think that's fine.
Yes, but very good study. I think city needs to keep this study as a resource, so I appreciate the investment that will continue to at least serve as a mitmaster if it becomes a myth.
Thank you. Okay. So, okay, I thought you had nothing. Okay, please. Well, comments for later, questions are for now.
Okay, no question.
So, yeah, I do have a bunch of questions for you. So can we agree that the methodologies that the study cited do have significant limitations in design, sample size, and controls? Agreed?
Sure.
Awesome. And the FHWA's instrumented vehicle studies found glance times well within safety thresholds?
Yes.
Okay. Real-world crash data, multi-state analysis have not shown increased crash rates following digital billboard installations?
Correct.
Okay. Now, let's go to the other side. So I'm going to just warn you, this is the other side of the coin, okay?
Okay.
Limited definition research. While existing studies don't prove danger, they also don't prove safety. Okay? Local data in advocacy, I think we pretty much consisted, you know, went through that. Even the Commission Traffic Analysis acknowledges that the data is insufficient to, for reliable conclusions. Do you agree with that?
Well, yeah, individual studies, yes. Taken all together, they might lead to a conclusion.
Okay. Contextual differences, so Highway 101 in Santa Clara has a unique traffic pattern, and driver behavior may not match the other study location, right?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, we're, it's a good study, but it basically is showing this is inconclusive.
Yeah, I mean, I'd give you an example, it's really difficult to find digital billboard signs that are in like a perfectly straight area with no interchanges, no off-ramps, and no other signs, so, I mean, the, that's another thing that makes this difficult.
Belmont Shores or San Carlos, you know which one I'm referring to?
San Carlos has a number of them.
Yeah. There's a big one that I always see, but, okay.
And it's got, you know, digital, regular billboards, it's got highway signs showing you the amount of money you pay for the hot lanes, it's got on-ramps and off-ramps, and, you know, it's a lot going on there. It's similar to Santa Clara.
Okay.
880? Yeah, going to Fremont.
And it has all those signs for the fast-track line, I know that, but I don't know about the other signs.
The billboards.
Yeah. If you say so, I believe you. All right, so any more questions for the applicant?
No.
Nope. All right. Any public comment? So, please, you can go ahead and sit down if you like.
Thank you.
No, we don't have any public comments.
Okay, given the, all the comments that are there, do one of the three of you want to rebut your own person? I assume not. Okay.
Motion to close public debate.
I'm sorry, I'm the new chair this time, so apologize for my amateurish stuff at times here.
Oh, you're doing good, please.
You're doing really good, Eric. Get it quick.
Doing fine.
Are you able to do your vote, Mario?
Say it again, please.
Are you able to do your vote?
Yes. No, I don't have it in mind, so.
Okay, it's not working, thank you. Okay.
All right, discussion?
Sure.
Commissioner Biagini.
I want to echo to the applicant, thank you for hearing what Commissioner and now Chair Crutchlow had to say and following up on the studies. It's pretty clear to me that the conclusion is you can't really draw a conclusion, which is understandable, because when I think about a five-year study and look in this circumstance, commute hour five years ago sure looked a lot different than commute hour now. Cell phone usage sure looks a whole lot different today than it did five years ago, so how do you compare? But I do appreciate greatly the fact that the applicant went through the process to complete the studies. I don't know that I have, that I'm any further in deciding where I'm at on this because of that, but.
Any other comments?
Cut and dry.
No? All right, then I'll make my final one. I have a question for legal real quick. Minutes are for the actions of the commission, correct? If I wanted to ask that something I say be put into the minutes, is that something I can do?
You, as the Planning Commission, decide what goes into your minutes. We did adopt a practice as a city of doing action minutes where it is basically just, you know, here's the motion, here's the vote, without a lot of detail, but if you have something that's important to you to put into the minutes, you can ask that it be put in, and we will do that, and then you'll get a chance to approve it at the next meeting, and we can edit it as necessary.
Thanks.
So that's a long-winded yes, I'm getting tired.
That's quite right.
You can put it in.
I haven't reached 11 o'clock yet, so we're gonna, I'm not gonna try for it, trust me. All right, so I do want to put this in the minutes, and Elizabeth, I have this in writing, so you can do it for later if you want, okay? So the one thing I want to say is, the safety case is reasonably strong but not definitive. The available research does not support the claims that properly regulated digital billboards significantly increase crash risk. The study most, the studies most cited often by opponents have acknowledged limitations and inconclusive results. However, the absence of proof of harm is not the same as proof of safety. That's all I have to say. So thank you for that, Elizabeth, and I'll give this to you so that you can.
Okay, so this.
Okay, you got it, thank you. Okay, you got it, thank you.
All right. Okay, so we're ready for a motion? With that said, anyone else just last time? Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Like to make a motion?
Please.
Okay. Action for, approve a conditional use permit for PLN 2400424 to construct a single-sided digital LED billboard as part of the billboard relocation agreement and a minor modification. The CECA, I want to go to the CEBA. Yeah, let's go with the CECA first.
Please.
Okay. Determine that the project can be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CECA pursuant to CECA Guidelines Section 15303 Class 3 New Construction or conversion of small structures.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second. One at a time.
Okay. Now.
Elizabeth, did you get that okay?
Do you want to go faster?
It's the first recommendation.
No, it's staff recommendation one.
You got it?
Yes. I seconded it.
Okay. Then, yeah.
Go ahead and cast your vote, please.
Okay, that's going to be vote.
Okay, the motion passed, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow the, for construction of a single-sided LED billboard as part of a billboard relocation agreement located at 1700 Duane Avenue, subject to findings and conditions of approval.
Second.
Point of order here. I thought you said it was two-sided, not one-sided. Am I, am I making a mistake?
That was a prior, he was, that was in the, he was discussing the 941 Laurel Wood, I think it was.
Okay, so I might have the dress wrong. I'll make sure. Sorry.
One-sided. Okay.
Okay. So approving staff recommendation two, go ahead and cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution approving a minor modification to reduce the required.
Excuse me, Chair, did you, you didn't cast your vote?
Me? Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry, hold on, you did, thank you. So that vote, we have, you're abstaining from that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay.
He doesn't like LED. Adopt a resolution approving a minor modification to reduce the required 1,500 linear feet distance from another electronic digital display message sign located at 1700 Duane Avenue, subject to findings and conditions of approval. Recommend to the City Council to approve of the billboard relocation agreement.
You are on a recommendation three, correct?
Correct.
Four is a separate one.
Correct.
I'll second recommendation number three.
Okay. Go ahead and cast your vote, please. Okay. And we have five yes and one abstain.
Yeah. And the last part is recommend to the City Council approval of the billboard relocation agreement.
Second. Okay, go ahead and cast your vote, please. Okay. And the motion passed, thank you. And that is, that is it.
Thank you, staff. What's next? Reports of Commission Board Liaison Committee. What do we have for reports?
Staff, I didn't follow, but are you going to give us the City Council action when that item comes up on related?
I was going to do that under the Director of Community Development Reports number three, City Council actions, but I can do it now if you like.
Sure.
You want me to do now?
Well, no, I mean, was there any?
We have three categories before.
Yeah, you have.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Sure.
I love hearing these reports.
Awesome, fantastic. So I'm going to skip ahead. So since your last meeting on June 11th, the City Council did hear three items that you acted on, the first being the related Santa Clara project, for which they did approve the project.
Without the condition that we recommended.
Without the condition that you recommended, that would be correct.
Why?
Why?
You asked.
They, they didn't specify why. Apologies.
Sorry, what?
They didn't specify why. They did not specify why they did not accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Not acceptable.
And the other two projects were at 2303 Giannera Street, which were the eight town homes, and 4249 Cheney Street, which were the nine townhomes, very near to each other. The Planning Commission recommended approval of both of those, as did the City Council. And that is it for City Council actions.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from reports? Are we good on that, ready to go to the next one?
I can give you one more item, since I'm speaking. I did send you all an email regarding the Planning Commission's work plan and the new process, so if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer it, but the City Clerk's Office and the City Manager is changing the process for how we do work plans. So if you didn't get a chance to read the email, they no longer are going to do the dinners, but they're going to do a yearly gathering with the City Council and all the boards and commissions, where they'll do recognition and presentations. So the work plan that we have worked on will be sent to the City Council, or to the City Clerk's Office, and they will put it with the other commission and board work plans at a council meeting in September, all as one group of plans. So there was a little more detail in the, in the email that was from the Clerk's Office, if you want to go and read that, yes.
Quick question, and you can take a wild guess. So at this meeting of City Council and everybody else, how many folks are we talking about?
For the yearly meeting that they're going to hold?
Yes.
So that would be all our boards and commissions, so Cultural Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission.
So we're talking a group of 200?
Yeah, BPAC, yeah, what we got, like seven, eight commissions, all with seven folks. Yeah, so there's a good number.
In here?
So I don't have the details as to where they will be holding it. I heard, I haven't been here forever, but I've heard they used to do this in the past, and it was held at the Convention Center. That would be my guess, but I do not know.
So we're not talking a one-hour meeting?
It would not be a one-hour meeting, no, no.
I hope not.
Yes.
So, do you know for a fact it's going to be like, everybody shows up at 7:00, and whenever your turn is, your turn is?
I don't know for a fact. I just know that it's going to be definitely longer than an hour, they're going to have.
My only suggestion would be then, if it's at all possible, to say, hey, listen, since we know you're near the end of the list, come at this time. That's all I'm, I'm saying, if there's a way to possibly say, we don't have to sit for the entire thing, or the Planning Commission can be first.
I will put that request forward.
Wait, I interpreted that call to say they're going to receive a written document, and then everybody who gets recognition, and it's just a recognition forum. They're not sitting down and talking it out.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure, I'm not sure they're entirely sure, but the email said that there would be time for recognition and for presentations. I believe there'll also be food, yeah.
Question is, why?
Longer than an hour.
My question is, why are we doing this?
You know, let me open the email, because I don't want to misrepresent the clerk's voice.
You know what, do you really want to go over that right now at 10:00 at night?
I just want to recommend that whatever people, whatever commissions have on their wish list, get shared with everybody else. If that is possible.
It's not a secret.
Yeah. So in the, in the email, the, their intent of putting all the work plans together at one time was to provide the council with clear prioritization, enhance transparency between the different work plans, improve coordination and informed decision-making, and then in addition to that, they said they, they're calling it an annual recognition-appreciation dinner that will recognize boards and commission members, and it will take the place of the individual dinners, and will be an opportunity for boards and commissions to highlight their accomplishments with each other and with the City Council.
Okay.
And it will be held in the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other reports from anybody? Anybody? Elizabeth, you're good?
No, let's talk real quick about your travel. Just a reminder that Chair Kretschlow and Commissioner Wang are going to the California APA Conference, and you were sent all the information, so you have it, it's coming up, September 28th, okay? So we have that, and then we could move on, if you want, to the budget. The fiscal year started July 1st. Planning Commission budget is $17,365. We've had a few small expenses so far, I haven't put that on here yet, so that's your budget, and you can plan accordingly for the upcoming fiscal year.
Can I make a request for budget allocation to make an early call to get a table for City of Santa Clara at the next Silicon State of the Valley address?
Well, yes, you can, but as you know, when that opens up.
No, we'll get a table.
Oh, to get a table. It's a table of 10, I believe?
Seven to 10, I think it's 3,000 plus.
You have to buy 10, you can't say seven at a table, you have to buy the full.
Yeah.
You want, well, you're going to have to take a vote to expend those funds, that happens, when is that? I forget, is that January, February?
Yeah, it's February, March, it depends on the last.
Why don't we put a placeholder, I'll make a note.
They get very quickly sold out.
Well, I know, because.
That's why I'm saying, let's.
But to buy a table. It, it, the, it will not open until close to the meeting date. I've been doing this for years, unless they change something, to buy a table.
Table, you, you basically.
It's easier to buy a table than just a few seats. I mean, there's, usually you can do that.
Yeah.
What?
Okay, enough, let's get going here.
So just making an early call, because I know last year, we really struggled, and I did see Rena and few of our city administration there, no council members, but I see great value, especially in this current state of headwinds.
Mm-hmm. You got it. Well, then again, you're going to have to confirm that you, who's going to be attending, we don't want to buy a ticket and have someone not use it.
Everybody.
That never happens.
So, so.
Right, so, bottom line, if we want to get a table, we don't know how many people are going to actually be there, but we would have to expend that now, hopefully that we fill it up.
Yeah. Well, or you could plan, I don't know, if it's a possibility to split a table with staff who's paying their staff part, I have no idea, but we can address that when we come to this.
Well.
We won't know until December or so.
So, Priya, what would you like to do? You like to?
I'm saying just make a vote to look at an opportunity to get a table and allow city, planning commissioners, plus council, plus staff, to recognize, you have up to 10 seats maybe at the table?
So you want to make a motion now?
I just did.
I don't think we need to make a mo, do we need to make a motion on that? I mean, we can't even do anything right now, I can.
It's an action item. Yeah. Reportable action.
Only because it came under budgets, if it's not, take it up.
Let's make a reportable action, we can take it up next time, and then staff has plenty of time to say, yes, you can, no, you can't do this. All right? Great.
Because last time it was, you don't have the money, we don't have the money, we're like, our budget.
Anything else, Elizabeth?
No, Leslie already did the upcoming agenda items. I think when we did council items, we are at adjournment.
Wants to move to adjourn. Moved to adjourn.
Great, thank you.
Adjourned. Oh, I didn't even get a chance to thank her.